We'll call to order the January 10th meeting of the Dayton City Council. I stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Okay. Uh, we have a break. Oh, we gotta spray it, man.
Go ahead, yeah. And who are we gonna spray you in?
Go outside, you just come back in.
Okay. Just follow the red carpet.
Hold on, Matt, you gotta get the microphone. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, you're good.
I, Matt Tross, do solemnly swear or affirm.
I, Matt Tross, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office.
For the city of Dayton.
For the city of Dayton.
As a council member in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
As a council member in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And the best of my judgment and ability.
And the best of my judgment and ability. Congratulations.
Uh, council members, mic up. Approval of the agenda. Uh, any motion in a second?
A motion.
I'll second.
Right in there. And there's a change to the.
Do you have an addition?
Consent?
I'm sorry, I missed that motion. Can you tell me who got that?
Nope. That was kind of a question. I had heard you talking about Zach.
Um, I do have an item to add, but it was Travis and Matt.
Oh, who did that?
Yeah.
Travis first, second, Matt.
Got it. Okay. Now I'm up to speed.
Yep.
Um, I need to add Resolution 523. It's a mendat agreement to update our 2018 agreement. I did send that out in an email early.
Yep. Um, okay.
Let's add that as P1, please.
P1, yep. Any other changes? Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion unanimous. Uh, consent. Um, I need a motion and a second.
Motion? I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yep. On C.
C.
Stealing my thunder. Go ahead. I said stealing my thunder, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
This is my thunder. In six years, this is the only change order that I approve of. Because we get a credit.
So, when I seen it, I kinda thought it was put in there on purpose.
That's where you go. Just to see if I can catch it, right?
It's a positive.
We were testing to see if you read your package.
Make sure you read your package.
Okay. Do you have any other real?
That's it. I was just kinda, the whole bridge is made of concrete, so the strength test on the project failed to meet the specified value for the test. I'm just kinda curious, like.
How that works.
At what part are we talking here?
Yeah, so I had concerns on this as well, and it turns out that the failing test represented a batch that totaled about four yards, hence a small amount.
Right.
And it was actually used on slope paving, which is the part under the bridge that doesn't support any weight or anything else. And it was actually not that far below the specification.
Okay.
So, the thought was, by all means, let's just leave it in there, take the deduct instead of having to redo the work.
So, do we over-spect that by chance? Isn't that a kind of a standard statewide?
Yeah, it's the typical spec used. Yeah, the test just fell short. It happens time to time, not real often, but it does happen.
Because there's nothing other than, yeah, there's nothing it's supporting.
Does it get erosion control type thing?
Yeah, yeah, it's just to stabilize the slope so it stays in place.
Sure.
Go ahead.
All right, I have several. We'll start with item D, signatories for 2023. On the action, it appears that we need to name a council member to be the other signatory besides Amy and the mayor.
Um, yes, sorry, yep.
Yes, please.
So, I don't know who that is, but.
Well, who wants to do it?
You tell me.
You tell us, yep.
It amounts to very little. Occasionally, you get asked to, I guess, is it a backup for me then?
Yeah, when we sign like the wire transfers and stuff, when we had those documents being signed. Let's say if, yeah, let's say if Amy was out of the office, I'd have to request it to be two calls.
So, it's any two out of the three?
Correct, yep.
So, that's what it is.
It's never happened.
Yeah, it's really.
Well, that's not purposeful.
Not in my time.
I'd say.
Well, I've used two specifics.
I was on it before.
Okay.
It's not a big deal.
I rarely go on vacation, yes, that's correct.
I don't care if you're taking yet.
You heard that, you should.
I might be fishing.
I'm fine either way.
Okay, well, let's put Dave on there.
Okay. So, we'll arrange, because you will have to come to the bank and sign some papers.
Okay, page 19 on E. Um, myself here. So, it talks about this in the background, that there are changes to the fee schedule, including adding an annual payment for utility escrow balances. I guess I don't understand what that means.
Nine, page 19, sorry, I'm trying to find that in the packet. Well, so that means that, so what happens is currently we have $3,000 per time, say, CenturyLink needs to go in the right of way and use our right of way. They have to pay $3,000 per time that they use the right of way in order for escrow balance to make sure that we're able to get our money back. Instead, they can just pay one-time annual fee of $10,000, so they have either or. So, if they're gonna be in the right of way multiple times throughout our right of ways within the city, they can use and just pay a one-time annual escrow, then we just hold on to it, and they can use it however many times they need to versus having three or four or five different $3,000 escrows. So, what'll happen sometimes if then like Comcast or CenturyLink or whoever wants to get in the right of way to be able to do some utility work or.
Center point, anything that's biggest.
Yeah, they will have to pay $3,000 per time until it's cleared by Marty. So, Marty will go around and do the verification that's been completed so that we can give them back their escrow money. So, instead of doing it $3,000 per time with just a one-time annual fee and then we just hold on to it. So, that's, it just was never in the, we've operated with it, but we never had it included in the fee schedule, so we needed to include it.
So, this is an add?
Correct.
And it's just kind of a convenience thing.
Correct, it's a convenience, so utilities don't have to ask us every time to do a $3,000 payment.
Okay. Um, thank you.
Yes.
In that same, under the same number, letter E, I'm just curious how sewer fees are determined, residential sewer fees in particular. And we're not metering sewer, obviously, we meter water.
Correct. So, it's done based on averaging in January and February, so whatever the January, February usage is that's billed in March, that is how much is billed for you for the annual amount of time that you have the sewer for the year. So, let's say you used 8,000 gallons in those two months, you'd be charged 8,000 gallons every bimonthly for sewer, unless your water usage is less than that. So, we meter water usage, and so we've metered your water usage in January and February because that's typically your least amount of usage because it will not include any water in your yard. So, we use that amount number every bimonthly to bill you for sewer, unless it's less. So, let's say, for example, your family takes a two-month vacation to wherever in the middle of summer and you used 1,000 gallons, we'd only bill you 1,000 gallons of sewer, not 8,000 gallons of sewer. But if you water your lawn like crazy and you have 100,000 gallons of water you use, you only build 8,000 gallons of sewer.
And the intent of doing it this way is to sort of zero out the water that gets used for sprinkling during the summer months?
That's correct.
So, people aren't paying sewer for.
You got it.
Not use essentially.
There's one of two ways to do it. Either we do it this way with an averaging period over the winter, or you have a separate second meter that's put in your house, which then costs you another base fee, and then only that waters and build that irrigation, but then everything in your house is billed with sewer and water. So, communities do it both ways, we just elected to do it one.
Now, this probably makes the most sense. I know at the hospital, we had deduct meters for cooling towers and various other things, and it's a royal pain to keep track of.
Oh, and the other way around, they metered what to take out.
Right.
Okay. I think I've asked this in the past, but what do you do with the people that lay their houses empty January, February?
They get a good.
They get a good ordeal, yeah.
They get a good deal.
Don't people take vacation?
Intent, I don't know.
Yeah, right.
Probably shouldn't ask.
Shouldn't ask that question.
Moving right along, thank you for that explanation.
Yep.
I appreciate that, and I think that that works for me. Um, on page, item H, page 38, we are accepting a donation from QuickTrip, which I certainly appreciate, I just don't know who Catherine Myers is.
Well, did I now remove it? It's my previous one, I'll change that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was from.
That was from.
I thought, I thought.
That was a previous.
Donation we got.
They just used the same resolution.
$5,000.
Yeah, okay.
I'll change it, sorry.
Suspected that.
Happens.
All right. Um, item K, approval of cross-access agreement.
Yep.
Not entirely clear to me which lots we are talking about, but if they're the ones that I think they are, you know, one is well over 40 acres and one is at 29, so is there gonna have to be some kind of replating if they move ahead with trying to build something there?
Nope, so they will be able to build there because there are lots of record. So, you're able to have one house per lot of record in the city without having to subdivide. If you want to subdivide, then you have to have 40 acres per lot.
So, it, all right, I get it. Okay, thank you. Then item N, approval of letter of credit reduction for Riverwalk 1 and release of Riverwalk groundbreaking. And there isn't an amount of the reduction listed in the resolution. The other ones do have it, but I think that line is missing, so I don't know how much we're reducing it.
I will pass Jason.
To be honest, that might be because we didn't have the record of the current amount, so instead we just demonstrate or we determine what the remaining work is, and then that's where we base the retainer on. So, whatever that balance is, that's what we reduce to.
Looked like maybe on page 105, they list a number of 24,331.
That could be what they have on record, it might be that we just weren't able to confirm that.
Okay.
We don't always have the records of the actual letter of credits in place, so when we, when we do that, we just verify that we're recommending we hold enough. That's the concern.
Right, on that side, yeah, I get that, and that was there, that there's ample fund 120% of the suspected remaining work.
Right.
Being held on the letter of credit, but it doesn't say what we're reducing it by, from where to where.
Because we couldn't, could, we, again, whether they were holding 4 million or 2 million, it needs to be, it can be reduced down to what we hold. So, if we weren't able to verify that starting point, we just omit it from the recommendation.
That would have been missed, you know, on my.
Yeah, all right.
So, you'll just bring it down to the 96?
Yeah, we'll verify that there's enough retained, so we're, we have our risk accounted for.
Okay. And then item P, which is approval of Carson Clallan and Schreeder to be our prosecuting attorneys. I see that they're asking for a 5.4% increase in their retainer. Do we know, is that consistent with their other billing rates?
I don't know about the other billing rates, I know it's a set fee that we pay per month. I believe it's $2,000 a month this, in 2022.
Will be, and it was 1,900 previously.
Yeah, correct. So, they are current prosecuting attorneys, so I can have the chief, if he did any more understanding of that, but I don't, I didn't look at any of their other rates, to be honest.
Their current billing rate is just for the prosecuting. If we do go to jury trial, there is a separate fee for jury trials, they include so many free jury trials with that retainer, and then after that, it, they charge per jury trial.
Okay, so, we don't know what their other billing rates are.
However, we looked at the rate in total and said, okay, how much are we using them? And it was a good deal, that's why we continued to use that, versus just pushing back immediately. Because if it was a larger rate decrease than we were actually using, we push back and say, no, there's, we don't use you guys that much, it's not.
So, generally, we don't go past the retainer?
Correct, yeah, we haven't, this year we didn't at all.
We're such a high-crime city that we don't.
Yeah, that's all right.
Knock on someone, please.
Okay, that's all I had on concern.
Matt, you have anything?
Oh, yeah, I've got a couple items. So, the first one was around the fees. So, Zach and I had talked, I had questions on some of the fees, he said we can change them later if we need to, so he's doing some research on some of those for me. The other one was page 32 on fire inspection fees. So, do we not charge at all for a fire inspection in the city, and is that normal? Does cities normally charge for a fire inspection? It said the first follow-up was free. Don't know if I asked Zach or if I asked Gary.
Councilmember Tross, typically, agencies will charge a fee initially, and then a re-inspection fee if needed. Currently, right now, with, uh, well, Central.
Metro.
Metro West, sorry. Doing our inspections, I don't know how that works, Zach might be able to answer that, I guess.
We haven't had any, we haven't had any reason to charge them at all based on those fees. The idea is not to collect a fee for it, it's to be able to protect our citizens and our residents and people who use those facilities. So, the idea was to not charge them right away, especially when they go one time, it's more like a, okay, here we go, fix it. If we have to go more than one time for the follow-up, then we would charge them based on the fact that we're trying to help them without them, you know, charging a fee for that.
This has come up in the past for other building inspections, I know that we don't.
We do not.
And I know Largo does, if you fail something, you have to come out again, you get hit again. I know we try to cover that in the basic cost, but I think the downside of that is, now, we brought the deck permits way down, they were just nuts. I had residents paying 800, $900 for a deck permit. We brought it down to like 2 something. The problem is, I think it could come down even more, but so many people don't build the steps correctly, or, you know, they gotta come out again, so that really eats into that. Might be nice to rethink that, and, you know, if you fail an inspection, you know, it's the cost.
We currently do not charge for any re-inspections, whether it's building permits or.
Right.
Fire inspections or whatever, we do not charge for any re-inspection.
Because there's fees for the second follow-up, third follow-up, and fourth follow-up, there's just nothing, it didn't say anything about the initial inspection.
Initial one is free, and then the first follow-up is free. Again, it's to be able to help the business be better at fire stuff so that we can protect not only our citizens, residents, but also our staff as well, too, so.
You're good with that, Gary?
In the future, I think we'd like to revisit that, as we start to do more inspections here within the community on our own without employing a third-party contractor, we would instill some sort of small inspection fee, that's what most communities do to offset some of the drain from the fire department budget that it takes on the general fund.
So, we'll look to you to kind of update us on that as needed, please.
Yep, no problem.
And the second item I have was on item K, so just to be clear, we can cancel that at any point in time for any reason we want, without any, like, major notification to the homeowners, and the homeowners are okay with that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we'd have to let them know that, hey, you're gonna have to find another access point, because we were trying to work with them to be able to help them with the county and, you know, their county, right, you know, situation that they had going on, so, but yes, essentially, we can be able to cancel it anytime with reasonable information that will be given.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor passing consent, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, again, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Um, next is open forum. Open forum is limited to three minutes. For non-adjunct items, state your name and address. No council action will be taken, and items will be referred back to staff. Do we have anybody for open forum? Come on up. So, yeah, state your name and address, and at some point, you can fill out one of those two.
Just make sure you fill one all before you leave.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Kyle Johnson. I live on 15262, 116th Avenue North in the Braburn Trails community. First, I want to thank all of you for your time and attention, and thank Dennis and Zach for the communications that you guys have had with me leading up to this. I'm here with other residents of Braburn Trails to express our concern about the Conexus substation on 117th. We are here to urge council to make every possible effort to relocate the substation. At almost two acres and 83 feet tall in some places, this structure is massive and cannot adequately be screened, which is acknowledged in the CUP and in past council meetings. For many of us in Braburn Trails, it's, this is devastating. One thing I want to address, because I know the comment has been made about doing due diligence upfront, many in our community reached out to various sources, there have been several that reached out to the builders, which I know is not you guys, several that reached out to city council, potentially members that are no longer with city council, and everyone was referred to the 2040 land use map, which does not show this. So, many people did ask about what would be done with this land. I know that that is not your fault, but I did want to address it. Our homes were supposed to be our family's dream homes, for my family and for the other families in our community. The close proximity and direct line of sight from many of our homes will be a major eyesore and diminish the enjoyment of our properties. In addition, the homes in close proximity will certainly take a hit in property value and saleability. In initial discussions with real estate experts, the consensus from all is that we're looking at at least a 1% to 2% reduction in property values. Currently, there are 12 homes at a minimum with a direct view in Braburn Trails 1, and 19 more being built. In addition to this, in future builds, with the potential development of Braburn Trails 2, it would add another 20 or more homes with a direct line of sight. The total conservative estimate of lost value is $600,000 or more for these properties. Surely, this is not in the best interest of the city of Dayton as a whole either, as far as aesthetics, city appeal, and value are concerned. There will be around 400 homes when construction is complete in Braburn Trails 1 and 2, which will be one of the most developed parts of the city, potentially making up over 5% of the city's population. What we want is, we want our city to have infrastructure that makes sense and things to be done the right way, so that we have broad appeal, similar to successful cities such as Maple Grove. Once the substation goes in, it can't be undone as the city develops.
Kyle, you got quite a bit more, or?
I've got one paragraph.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sympathetic to the fact that council was put in a bad spot by decisions made before, before they took over, and that infrastructure such as substations are necessary, but this location does not make sense in 2023. It did in 2006, but the city has changed. I travel the state of Minnesota and Wisconsin for work and see dozens of substations, they are industrial areas, areas that are not residential, and by highways. This is by far the most detrimental location I have encountered. What I want the council to consider, has Conexus been made aware of the concerns of residents, and have they been engaged in communication? Have they confirmed that 125th is the only other feasible location? I was informed that residents on 125th were not interested in selling. My follow-up to that is, was that a hard no, or would they accept a sweetened offer? Because there is a lot of money at risk for current residents, for residents in future, and the overall value and appeal of the city of Dayton. I ask that you guys take our concerns seriously and do what you are able to do, and I understand their limitations. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? State your name and address, and then, oh, Kyle, can you?
Yes, to fill out your form.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need it right now, we're just, it'd be great.
My name is Sherry Hunter. I live at 15304, 116th Avenue North. We have been there one year. My daughter-in-law sent a letter, they are also in Braburn Trails, our son, daughter-in-law, and our three grandkids, and one of the responses back in, from her letter to city council, indicated that so often, property owners don't do their due diligence. I wanted to tell you, and it may not be those of you sitting here now, but I'm in my 70s, and I did my due diligence. My problem was that I did it on the phone, I didn't do it in writing, I didn't hire an attorney to investigate further. I spoke before we ever signed papers for building with, I believe it was your city planner, and asked specifically about that property, and was told it was low-density residential, and of course, that can change over time, but at no time was I told that there was a section in there that was owned and by Connects Energy. So, what I was led to believe, and then also in subsequent conversation sometime later, I was led to believe that they would be looking for low-density housing similar to what we were building. That only makes sense. And I'd like to piggyback a little bit on what the previous speaker was saying, because what I was envisioning is, you've got Lennar, you've got Braburn Trails, Braburn Trails 2, you've got what's planned, hopefully, was supposed to be a nice city park, and if you think about the kind of community we would be building, if we put additional nice residential expensive homes in that section over there, then we're building a pretty nice community with a very nice area. But what's happening is not just, I think, the 1% and 2% loss that Kyle was talking about. I don't know that you're going to be able to sell those 19 lots. Once that starts being built, and we're not gonna be able to be quiet, I couldn't, in good conscience, having been told myself that it was zoned for residential like what we have, anyone in their right mind, you are in city government, you of all people should know, once you put something like that there, you are not going to get somebody that wants to come in and build a million-dollar or an $800,000 house right next to it. And now, cat's out of the bag, and I wonder what will happen to the future Braburn Trails, the future of that, rest of that development. It's very concerning to us. We wanted peace in our retirement, we wanted to just be there and enjoy our grandkids. Scott came around campaigning, we talked about the road, we talked about that section of land there, and I'm not picking on you, okay? I didn't specifically say, is there an electrical substation planned for that spot? But we talked about the neighborhood, we talked about the development of the city, and we talked about my concern of, you know, would that road be something that would take away and cause us to have to put in industry there, industrial parks? What a travesty, what a tragic thing, and what a horrible thing to do to the folks like us that built in good faith, and didn't get the right answer. I even talked to your city assessor and made sure that subsequent to when our, when our house was built and where we were building, that the percentage of increase on our property tax, we as retired people on a fixed income, we're still gonna be able to pay our property tax. Believe me, I did my due diligence, and so, with all due respect, do not think that we didn't ask, maybe didn't go far enough, maybe didn't get it in writing, maybe didn't ask quite the right probing questions, but, but when you look at the map and it doesn't have it on it, and we did, we came here to City Hall and looked at a map, and there was no electrical substation thing, it was a colored thing, and it was, it confirmed what we'd been told. So, I urge you, please, please, to think about what you might be able to do here. I'm sure I'm over my three minutes, I'm short, but I long winded. And so, thank you very much, I appreciate you taking the time to listen, and realize maybe that the ground has shifted from, was it 2006? So I urge you, please, please, to think about what you might be able to do here. I'm sure I'm over my three minutes, I'm short, but I long.
A little bit.
And so, thank you very much, I appreciate you taking the time to listen, and realize maybe that the ground has shifted from, was it 2006?
2006.
The ground has shifted a little bit, certainly the ground under my house shifted, and we would sure appreciate anything you could do to help. And think about our little kids on school buses up and down that road, because that's frightening too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Name and address in that paragraph sheet.
Christine Wagner, I live at 15369 116th Avenue North. So I just wanted to address the council today, thank you for taking time. I'm looking at the slogan, Live the Difference. So when I think about Dayton, I grew up in Anoka, I've been around Dayton my entire life. I have not left this area at all. So I grew up going to Sundance, everything. So living the difference, I thought moving to Dayton would be living the difference. I came from Blaine to Dayton, and I moved here because I knew that it was new, I knew you guys were planning, I knew you were building communities. Blaine has overpopulated where they've built some communities, but they have not stuck an electrical substation in any of their residential areas like this is planned. So I urge you guys to seriously consider decisions made in 2006 and the vision for the community going forward, and the vision for Dayton going forward, there's huge potential here. I see Dayton becoming the next Blaine, Minnesota, and expanding like that area has expanded. And there's so much potential here, it's a fabulous place to live, we have kind people, we have good people. You hear stories on different social media sites about neighbors helping neighbors. Don't create something that's going to disrupt that and make people not want to move here. So those are the things I just want you guys to take into consideration. I know, I know there's big electrical and there's all of that, but again, you guys represent us, you represent the community, you represent the future planning of what Dayton could be. Please, please, I urge you to take this with serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address in that sheet.
Eric Supple, 11534 Braburn Trail. So, just like the rest of the community members here, same, here to express my concerns as well, and I think, like Kyle and everyone else has done a great job of speaking about each of these components, I just want to reiterate those and kind of one more little nudge to, I guess, the council to hear these out. I know, you know, the planning commission meeting has already taken place as a public hearing, and it's already passed through the council, so that is a little bit my fear that we're at a dead end here, even though our efforts are happening now. But I guess the one thing I would urge is, I feel like the public hearing wasn't really made well-known. Done a little bit of research in that lately and realized that we fall outside of the area that would get sent mailers. And the only other point of that we have to view this is in the Dayton Champlin Press. I imagine many of us are not subscribers to that or even aware of it until now. And even in the weeks since, I've tried to access this at newsstand locations, and if you go in on a Thursday, or a Wednesday, the Thursday before the release, it's already the, the previous weeks is already out of stock or replaced with a new week. So, very hard to gather this information. I think many of us would look to Facebook, something like that, where previous public hearings have been announced, this was not announced, so very much an inconsistency there. So that's just one piece of that where I urge you to still take into account our, you know, concerns expressed maybe after the fact, when we were given maybe a more earlier chance to express these. I think too, the Live the Difference piece like resonates with me, the other part is in kind of the mission of Dayton, which is reserving that, preserving that rural character. And conceptually, this doesn't meet any of that. So that in addition to the CUP, which is the only construct that we have as citizens to look at, that seemed like it had to have been met and discussed each of those criteria, it seems like several of those criteria are not met. The screening, the impact on nearby land value and home prices, and then just the general aesthetic of how it fits into the comprehensive plan. Again, one of those people who felt like I did due diligence and did not see it in the comprehensive plan, still not in the comprehensive plan. I guess unknown to us, was it in the zoning plans at that time? You know, I can only look back as far as June 22, seeing it wasn't there then, I guess I would assume it was in there prior, but unknown, just maybe wasn't what I was referred to look to. But even with that, I guess.
Did you say it wasn't? The zoning?
I'm unsure, so the latest, yeah, the latest zoning one I've been able to see is June and now August of '22, so no access to it.
Once they're overwritten, then we have them historically if you want to look at them.
Okay, yeah.
But we just have them on the website.
It very well may be, so I'm not trying to argue that it wasn't, I just, I know in two of the sources I looked, it's not, because it still isn't. So just, I think that's some retroactive frustrations from us, and then just hoping that we can, you know, maybe put a plan in place to at least look as best as possible into a resolution for this and a better placement. That should be all that I have to say.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Make sure to grab a sheet. Thank you.
Anybody else?
A really good place to look is on our website for any, all of our agendas are posted, which include all public hearings, so you don't have to pay for a newspaper article or seek it elsewhere, we put all that information there for residents.
Can I?
Yep.
What about, sorry, you said it's on the website?
Yeah, so all of the agendas, like our city council agendas, if you go underneath government and you go to city council, you can look at each date agenda, same thing with planning, you can go under government and go under planning, and every planning packet and agenda, that's the first item of the agenda which spells out everything that's going to be discussed, and then it would have public hearing and what that public hearing is.
In other words, everything's on there before it happens.
And that comes out the day of the meeting or the day?
It comes out the Thursday before the meeting.
The Thursday before, five days.
I mean, do we have, so?
So short.
You just have to be diligent to look at it.
Makes you feel any better?
You don't, you won't see it.
Yeah, that's when we get it.
So am I. I mean, this is a little bit frustrating, I feel like I'm being told I'm not being diligent.
No, no. I mean.
No, I was just trying to give another resource so you don't have to go seeking, paying for a paper.
Do, when you send those out, is there a mailing list, or do you just?
Yep, there's a mailing list. If you'd like to be on the mailing list, just retell.
Yeah, if you'd like an email to you, you can email me and request to be, I can add you to that distribution list, and your email becomes public data.
Can that be listed on the website as an option if they wanted to be part of it? Not trying to make it too cumbersome, but I feel like that's kind of what we're.
Sure, yeah, we could put like a little paragraph under each packet if you'd like to be on the distribution list, please email me.
Yeah.
Sure, we can add something like that.
Or even in the header above all the packets, we're toxic, yeah.
Yeah.
It's more mail, but at least you'll, you'll see at least in the agenda something piques your interest. We got anybody online?
We have many people online, so if anyone would like to use the Zoom function to speak during open forum, go ahead and use the raise your hand. I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Close the open forum, staff, consultant, and council updates. Zach?
Yep, so we were notified on Friday of last week that the city was awarded yet another award for the interchange project. We, I don't know what the ACAC is, but SRF decided to throw a name in the hat for ACAC Engineering Award, and we won that one as well. So congratulations to the city of Dayton. We will be accepting that award at their annual conference on February 24th. I don't know if we're going to start hanging them things in the city council chambers or what, we got three of them so far this year, so hopefully they'll be more.
Let Marty bring them home.
That sounds great, too.
Yeah, whatever.
He can put them in his barn.
Put them in your barn. Put them in his barn, and we'll have some use out of that thing.
Amy?
I don't, I don't have much for an update tonight.
Marty?
I have a couple of things. Basically, we've been snowplowing for the last couple of weeks here pretty much, went as well as can be expected with two major multi-day events, more or less back-to-back. We did have some complaints about volumes of snow in driveways and stuff like that, mailbox issues, but not too many complaints. I did put some information together and put it on the website about how to plow your driveway and not have the plow leave so much debris in your driveway. Hopefully that will help. I think we've got too much snow for some of it to help, but if we can have people shovel off in front of their driveway and clear some of that debris, that takes away from the plow bringing it back into your driveway.
Do you guys have that? I've seen some communities that plow.
Has the blade that comes on the end of those blades? He's been doing that.
Yeah, we've been doing.
So when you come up to a driveway, you drop that down and it's not going to?
Oh, no, they don't.
No.
Like the city of mine posted something on Facebook recently, other pilots have that, where it's like, it's an extra wedge that comes down.
It's a thing that comes down, and that way.
They do it for every driver, and they go by the video of it.
It's another $100 on the plow.
We haven't got that, but the thing is, I think what the major problem is, we've got so much snow on the boulevards there that it can't get up over there, so we're dragging it down the road, and the only place where it can escape is when you hit the driveway.
In an open driveway.
And so, the roads are creeping in a little bit, and when people have been doing their driveways, they push the snow to the end, come out onto the street, and stack it up onto their driveway, but they're not going behind the curb, so those piles are creeping out into the streets, so when the plow comes down, it goes back down the driveway. So I put some information up online about how to avoid some of that, so hopefully that will help.
Yeah, I, I, I thought you guys did a tremendous job for what you got hit with.
For what they got, yeah.
You got hammered.
You got a lot of hours in.
Yeah, we did get a lot of hours in, it wasn't too bad, but we did a lot of partial plowing as well, just to make sure that everything was open, not just on emergency routes like we normally do with the small snow. We went through the residential, kept them open, tried to get a path around so everybody had access, get through the cul-de-sacs, and then once the snow stopped or nearly stopped, we went out and did a full plow and did a full cleanup after that. So that was how we've managed on those two. So we've been trying to push back some of the snowbanks, so we've got some more snow storage, and it's pretty difficult in residential, because you've either got sidewalks that you don't want to push the snow onto, or you've got utilities, you know, the power boxes and all that stuff, so you can't see them. We did have an incident today where we were pushing back and we tipped one of those over, so took the internet out. But, so we're trying to do the best that we can with that, but it's really difficult. So that, we'll be carrying on with that, and the two new staff members started on January 3rd, so we had time to run them through their routes quickly, and they were in at 4 o'clock the next morning plowing.
Wow.
They did a really good job. They did, you know, as well as could be expected in the time, and they both seem to be really fitting in with the team and are team players, so they worked in really well, so I've got nothing but praise for those two guys. And that's all I have.
All right. Gary?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to give you an update as it relates to call volume for the last two years for the fire department. So in 2021, call volume was 365 calls, and in 2022, it was 472 calls. It's about a 22.7% increase. When you look across medicals and fire, medicals account for 55% of that, and 45% of that are fire calls. So with the increase in calls, last night, the officers and I met, trying to come up with some sort of plan to mitigate kind of a better work-life balance with firefighters based on their, you know, constantly being here to respond to 911 calls. I had kind of a plan, but we discussed it last night, and we decided that we would take another six months to review that, especially with Fitch and Associates coming in to help with the master plan for the fire department over the next six months. We'll reevaluate it mid-year and see kind of the feedback that we get from Fitch and Associates, and then also maybe come up with a different plan at that time. But just want to give you a where, kind of a where, kind of where we're at and kind of where we're going to. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just as Marty was saying, we made it through the snowstorm also, numerous vehicles in the ditch, but no serious accidents, so that's good news.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, had the opportunity to be in Dayton for a time last week here at City Hall and about town, and I wanted to give Director Farrell and his crew a shout-out to do a good job on that snow removal. I know they're working hard, and I just wanted to recognize.
No updates from engineering?
Yeah, I've got nothing.
Travis?
I just wanted to give a shout-out to the three directors sitting at that table over there, because during the snowstorm, there's a lot of calls for a lot of services, and that's a hot table when that stuff comes around, so work, I work really tight with all three of them up there, so it's always a joy when, when you go out on those incidents and that there's always good coverage throughout the city. So again, thank you for everything you guys do, and welcome to 2023.
I got nothing. Dave?
Just a question, I saw in the League of Minnesota Cities cite that they're, they are having a City Day on the Hill conference, when it's a chance for municipalities to be meeting with legislature leaders, et cetera, and I'm wondering if anybody is going. Oddly enough, they charge 99 bucks or something to attend this event?
They charge everything.
Nothing is free.
If you'd like to go, we're happy to sign you up, there's professional development dollars and dollars to be able to use for the council to go to those things, if you want to go, you most certainly can.
We should have somebody there.
Sure. Are you volunteering?
Yeah, okay, sure, I'm volunteering.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
There are more volunteers.
No, I got mine.
Is it local, David, or will you need?
No, it's in St. Paul someplace.
Okay, okay. I'll touch base on that.
So I've got a handful items probably, because it's, I'm sorry, are we done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I've got a handful items probably, because this is my first time, so first thank you to everyone for welcoming me, and to all the department leads that reached out to all of you to schedule time to sit down, better understand your departments, how they work, what's going well, what we need in the future to help, help get things on course, and thank you for timely responses on those and you those meetings set up. So I look forward to meeting with all of you on the 30th, so thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. Took a whole day off of work just to come meet with you all, so I appreciate it greatly. The, Zach, the substation comments today, I got emails, as I'm the new guy, I wasn't here when all this was kind of working through, if you can just work to figure out, you know, what we can do and give me an update of some kind, as me right now, and I'm kind of springing it on you, but updates on, have we caught, talked to Canexus about this, are they aware of the public concern, those kind of things, it'd be really good for, I think, me to know and then the citizens.
Yeah, I believe Canexus is aware of the citizens' concerns, I don't think that's been hidden by any means, but I'll provide the whole council an update, just so you're aware of things.
Perfect.
And then I will also reach out, I've been in touch with Kyle too, so I will let Kyle know, he's been kind of the spokesperson for the Braburn Trails Development, which I appreciate. So I'll let you know as well what we found out and all the information that we've done so far, just so everybody has the same information. Hopefully that will alleviate some calls back and forth between different parties, so I'll do that.
And thank you for taking point on that, thank you to everyone that came out and spoke up today, really appreciate it. So Marty, I've got some questions for you in particular, so for the wellhead treatment, I'm looking for an update on that. I know the goal is to have it done by the end of this year, and when they were here in person, like we got to order stuff really far in advance, because stuff's hard to get, and I feel like we're in this holding pattern, so what's going on with that?
So we're still doing the 60% design, a lot of the information that we need to size motors, electronics, and all that good stuff has to be decided yet, we can do it from the 15%, 20% plans, that was just an overall picture of the thing. We're still waiting for some information on the well, fire pumping volume, but we can make some assumptions on that. The schedule we're going to be, will be coming into operation in spring of 2024 is the scheduled date for that, which will tie in with well five coming online as well. So we'll do those two things together. I think that the supply chain is easier a little bit. I'd rather that we spent time getting the, the planning right and getting all the sizing right, and not making assumptions on the actual design work, and then having to do a bunch of change orders. I'm really trying to stay away from change orders on this project, so if we put the timing up front and get all that, that stuff sorted out properly, then we can avoid the change orders. So it's not really that far behind schedule, it's where I was expecting it to be, so we will get this done. Our funding dollars are still available for this project, so that's what changed the end date on that change, which helped us a little bit, because we were trying to hit that deadline, which is probably going to be unachievable.
Okay, and do we have, when's the next time we expect an update on that?
I have just got an email from them, I'm going to have an update with a 60% plan in. in first week of February.
Perfect, awesome.
And they're still shooting at an end goal of having the bulk of it in this fall?
Say again?
They're still shooting for the bulk of it being done this fall?
We are going to be getting the building up this fall, and so work on the inside can be done through the winter. That's the plan.
I just want to say thank you to your team for clearing the streets. I know everyone mentioned it, but it was noticeable. They were up more than I was clearing my own driveway, so kudos to them on that. So really appreciate that. On that front, plow trucks, how are we doing on plow trucks? I know we got a heck of a deal on one. Even Scott was impressed, which is always a good thing. And so do we have enough lined up as the city continues to grow and we, roads continue to be built? Are you comfortable? Zach was mentioning that there's some pretty big lead times on some of those vehicles, so I want to make sure that we're lined up to support the needs.
With the two pickups I've got ordered, the smaller plow trucks, we've got two ordered. We haven't got two confirmed yet. I'm missing a one ton, which I need to source from somewhere else. But with the bigger vehicles, we've got a single axle for 2023. I've been doing some talking with people. I think I've got one available to me that we could have built this year. I need to confirm a couple of things on the bodywork for it and the plow, but I think I can get that turned around this year. The other thing that I was looking at is there's a tandem axle truck. Those are a little bit more difficult to come by. I'm still trying to tie down when the chassis will be built for that, but that is a 2024 purchase. What I'm going to try and do is order it this year so we can take delivery of it next year and have that, we'll get billed at that time. So I'm going to try and coordinate that so we can get the chassis and the build done for 2024 by ordering this year.
Perfect. Thank you. And then when it comes to the fire hydrants, just maybe as awareness, who's responsible for clearing fire hydrants in the city? Do you have a city ordinance around this?
We don't have a city ordinance. We have asked residents wherever possible to maintain those hydrants. Where they're not maintained, we will go around. It's not our top priority. It's one of the last things that we get to. But we have been doing it, and where there's no residents there, like in the industrial park, we'll go and clean those out there. But we do really need the help of residents to try and keep those maintained.
And do we have a, like a budget for like a residence reward program? So if you go around and say, hey, this one's done really nice, we want to thank them for their hard work and saving us the work, that we give them like a $20 Amazon gift card, anything like that? Just thank you.
We haven't done that in the past, but we actually talked about this the other day. It might be something that we would look at doing. I'm sure we could find some funding for them.
Yeah, why don't you, if you do want to take a look and think about it and figure out a program, I think that'd be really good, just to bring highlight to the good work that people are doing to help relieve the work of the city, so you guys can focus more on the roads and the paths and other things. So thank you.
That's for sure.
Sounds like a good retirement idea.
There you go. You have some buddies, right? Looking for some...
No, not buddies.
Sounds like backbreaking work.
There you go. Thank you very much, Marty. I've got some, I'm going to go down the line. I've got them all lined up to keep it easy. So I don't want to interrupt you in your updates. So I've got some questions for the fire chiefs. So you mentioned on work-life balance, is the 25% being looked at, response sent me looked at before the six months is up? I've had a few individuals that I've talked to that are kind of concerned about that. I know that you're tracking it much more thoroughly than before, that Kevin's sending out updates. I'm just curious if that's being looked at as something a little more immediate to help relieve that pressure?
Yeah, so the, well, I saw from the officers came up with a plan to more or less remove medicals from their percentage. There's lots of challenges that are associated with that, and that was kind of the plan that we talked about last night. It's really a law of averages. When we have, currently, we have roughly 32 firefighters with our eight new recruits having the ability to respond. We can lower that, but the flip side of that is, is then that means I need to hire more firefighters. And that may or may not be possible depending upon, just because of the immense amount of work that it takes to become a firefighter. It's truly a part-time job, as opposed to, and this is no disrespect to anyone out there, but we're not training the cashier at Home Depot. It takes probably maybe a month, I'm assuming, but for us, the return of investment for a firefighter, I really don't start to see that. It's a good 18 months training, and a lot of it, I will say of the eight people, there's the potential to lose two, maybe four. And that's just statistics that the fire service sustains on an annual basis. So it's very difficult today. Been doing this for 28 years, and throughout that 28 years, now more than ever, it's changed, especially when you look at the different generations that are within the workforce. We have different priorities. And the biggest thing is, is that today, not everyone's interested in the almighty dollar necessarily. They're more interested in their time. So that predictability is not part of being a firefighter, unfortunately. I don't know when Mrs. Smith is going to call 911. So therefore, that becomes challenging. And so the 25%, we've been looking at it at the end of the day, but as I lower it, again, that law of averages will require, and I've said this to Zach, I've said this to Amy, I think I might even mention it to council once or twice, but this fire department will move towards full-time faster than any other organization that I've worked for, only because of those deficits within the workforce currently, as well as just time. You know, like I said, our call volume increased almost 23%. I look at that for next year. So if we look at 25% for next year, 580 calls, we're looking at 145 calls, plus training twice a month and maybe some work details. So at the end of the month, a firefighter will probably put in 25 hours a month on top of their regular job or whatever else is going on. So we try to prioritize your family, your job, and then the fire department. But unfortunately, because it's not predictable, it ends up being flipped. The fire department ends up, not on purpose, ends up kind of being the priority because we want to provide that good service to the community.
Well, I appreciate the work that you and all the firefighters do, so thank you very much for that. I think it'd be great for the council to see something, whatever you need to kind of make that happen. I think it'd be good for us to have and understand what the long-term plan, I know we're doing the study, but even quicker than that, if possible, just so like, here's what we could possibly do. I think it would be helpful for us to understand that, just to try to help give the firefighters that work-life balance they're looking for. So thank you for the update. Appreciate it. And then a while back, something kind of fun, I gave you that electric car training. Did you ever get that lined up?
No, we have not. So what we've done, a little bit more history in the department. So currently, right now, with our 32 people, we have years of tenure, 3.42 years. It's not to say that that is not important, because that's definitely part, probably more of a car fire threat for us than anything currently. The first six months of this year for training, we're working on the basics to really get folks up to speed from a medical perspective, but probably more so, we risk a lot to save a lot when we respond to fires. So I'm focusing on that right now. And then as we move into the summer months, we will have the opportunity to expand upon what we train on, but I have not at this point in time.
I'd love to attend if possible. It sounds like a fun one.
Especially because you own an electric car.
That helps.
Yeah, right.
That helps. And then for our police chief, I've got a question for you. I know edibles were recently legalized. I've heard through the grapevine that there is an edibles location right off of North Diamond Lake Road across into Rogers, and there's, it's like the possibility of legalization of marijuana is possible this year as well, given the current environments. The question I have to you is, does your team have the training that they need and want? Is there anything that you need from us around that to help support that as this chain shifts and as other communities and states have gone through this, it's provided some opportunities that they've learned from, and I'd like to try to get ahead of it if we can?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, all officers are trained on state statutes, marijuana, narcotics, how to recognize them, how to do that. When new legislation comes out, we update them on all the new statutes. So I'm fairly confident that they can recognize them and know what they're dealing with. As far as actual training, I've been through training for the edibles and the legalization of it just because of the employer's standpoint. I'm the manager of the officers, so went through training on what to know about public safety, if they can use, can't use, all that kind of stuff. So I've been through that training. As far as just pure edible training for officers, there isn't anything out there other than just news articles from League of Minnesota Cities. So I keep on researching to try to find them. When marijuana does get legalized, it's going to be a whole different story. There's going to be, have to be some training that comes out by the league or by postboard to guide officers.
There's still no way to quantify that, is there? You pull somebody over for clearly stoned. What do you do?
You can run them through HDIN testing, which is horizontal gaze nystagmus testing. Also, there's some other counting tests that you can do to determine if their speed slows down or picks up. And then if you believe they're under the influence, we have to draw a search warrant and then take blood or urine from them.
Okay, and that'll give you the quantifiable number you'd need for any court.
Correct.
As a city, there are. So I've met with many clerks in the area, and a lot of cities are choosing to license, just like we would cigarette license, liquor license. So that is an option. It is a way to have control or limit or not limit, but to put some rules in place around it if that's desired.
I don't see that as, I mean, liquors, we license that. We have DWAs all the time. I'm not sure licensing.
Yeah, I'm...
No, I get it.
It's more of an aware of what's going on.
That's all I have. Thank you.
You sure?
Positive. I think that's it. Scroll through everything. I think that's it.
Okay, on to new business. Item Q, direction discussion of the administrator position.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I know I was going to give a minute for going to take off.
Yeah, if you guys...
Aw, come on. You guys can stay till 9:30 or 10:00.
Thanks for coming out.
Yeah, thanks for showing up and speaking. It's hard for people to do, so.
And we're all going to be...
It's really going to get good.
Come on, really? No, it's good.
Thank you.
I'm a teacher. I have to go early. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as I was saying, this item is to give the direction and discussion on the city administrator position, what the council would like to do. As of May 23rd, I have been appointed interim city administrator, but we've had some other things go through there. We've had an organizational study done by EDA. Not sure we'll be caught up with that.
Yeah.
Some information was given there. Basically, it said that it would work for a combined position for now. Not saying it would be a long-term thing that would be able to be sustained long-term, longer than five years, however, it could be done now. But what we need to do with staff, and not just myself, but in staff in general, needs another direction of what the council would like to do of the city administrator position and how we can move forward. So we'll get the table back to the main on council.
Okay, who wants to start here? So you're basically asking, A, do we want to consider a full-time spot or not? And then B, if we want to go forward with opening it up for applications or what?
Sure. Yep, correct. So we have to have a full-time city administrator. We have interim typically to the last six months. Can maybe push it a little longer if you don't have direction, but we have, I think we have direction or what we're going to need, unless the council doesn't have any idea of what they'd like. But basically, what we need to do is either have, assign somebody a full-time city administrator position and say, you're going to be the city administrator, or we need to go up for applications or hire some company to be able to do an executive search for us, to be able to assign a full-time city administrator to this, to the city. So that is what we're looking for. It doesn't matter to city staff, myself, in general, what the council wants to do. We just want to make sure we have a full-time city administrator in this role so we can move forward and not have an interim role.
You say full-time, you're still, we're still...
Well, yeah, I'm still full-time. Yeah, I'm still full-time. It's just...
It's just permanent, dedicated.
It's still be a split role. If, I mean, if we chose that.
If you chose, if you chose, myself, it would be a split role. Yep. Or you can say, nope, we want to have you as a city administrator. We'd like to hire a finance director underneath you. That's fine too. We just need direction of what you'd like to do.
Or we'd like to be a finance director.
Yes.
That's a possibility as well.
Correct, that's a possibility, yes.
Dave, you want to go first?
I'll just simply say that's the direction I'd like to see us go is...
Go ahead.
Here's my deal. I think I'm comfortable where we are right now. The biggest thing that, the biggest thing that, my biggest concern is our lack of experience at City Hall is a concern. And I don't want it to get us into any trouble because this city has seen just an enormous amount of trouble in the past, and I think a lot of that is from lack of experience. We haven't had a real city administrator for eight or 10 years.
Dedicated one?
Yeah. I mean, a real one. I mean, Tina was here for a long time, but she wasn't one when she got here, and it's learning on the way. And learning on the way, though it's not bad, it causes problems.
Takes time.
And that's the biggest issue I have with it. I certainly don't want to pay anybody or to pay a firm to go and find this one. To me, you put an ad out there and you see what you get, and I can sit across the desk from a guy and then know if I like it or not. But that's just me. That's me personally.
I have a question, though. Is that the right choice, though? I mean...
I don't know that answer.
See, that's why I like the idea of the firm is because I, somebody has looked for somebody in the field. I don't have the experience, right? So a guy like me or a guy like you says, well, what is a city administrator going to do and who's the best person to find that? Blanket me with a bunch of applications and read through a bunch of notes. I mean, I could be swindled one way or the other. I have no idea what I'm looking for.
Did you say swindled?
One way or the other.
Well, my fear on the study is we get what we did with this. We just...
No, so it's not a study. It's not a study. You would be hiring an executive search firm. Well, they would do all the interviews, all the research, all the everything, and then they would, the final decision would be up to the council.
Yeah, I don't mind being part of the process. It's just, again, me, I'm a firefighter and a mechanic. City administrator, you know, qualifications, probably very far out there. So I, you know, I like the help.
I really think we need a community development director or a planner that knows his stuff.
Right, yeah. I'm on the city administrator thing first, yeah.
Separate issue.
Yeah.
Well, we got to get going on that. I mean, rather than waiting...
So would you have an interview?
There's a, I've got a whole list of things that we got to get after. We're just doing this.
I wish, I wish we weren't doing this, but...
Yeah, right.
It feels like it maybe, but we're not.
It feels.
As far as direction, that's what makes me feel comfortable.
Executive search firm?
Something, something that gives me more than just what my blind eyes is going into it with.
I don't, yeah. I haven't had good experience with search firms, but to me, it's all in the eye of, when you're looking at somebody across the table, but I don't know. I get it. I don't know. You...
Yeah, I'll weigh in. You know, I think that we have somewhat unintentionally let this interim role go on longer than we had anticipated. We, I certainly expected a different outcome from the study that we did in the way of guidance for a direction on what our structure ought to look like. Obviously, we all know we came up somewhat short on that, or way short. In any event, I think that, I think that there's a sense of urgency to this. You know, I have, I have concerns. I'll just be honest about the... Not the finance part of your experience, but just in general, the management experience that you've brought to the table, and it's not a reflection on yourself, it's stepping into a different role. Having said that, I think that I would be able to support making your role as it's defined now, permanent to the extent that anything is in our world. But I would like to see some kind of development plan requirement associated with that, and I don't think I'm saying that we would expect you to get a master's degree in something, but something along that path where it's a commitment to the education. I know your plate is more than full already, but I think that this is a big role and we need it. We need it done well, and I think that that would be beneficial to you as well. Part of my wanting to move on with this is, is that the administrator role is the, you know, is the central staffing boss of other things, and I agree with Scott, we need this community development director position. You know, I think we spend two-thirds of our time talking about development-related issues, and I think we need that, that... I think we spend two-thirds of our time talking about development-related issues and I think we need that, that expertise.
Expertise.
And, and I don't feel right about moving ahead on that until we have solved this. And so, you know, that's, I guess that's basically where I'm at. I'd like, I would be comfortable with us, uh, offering you the position as a permanent role with some commitment to development.
I would request that because I don't, I agree.
And in part because we need to move on, but that's, that's where.
But I concur on the development thing. I would love to do more of that and make it more of a priority for sure, because it is a big priority to be able to do those kind of things. One hundred percent. Okay?
So I think I agree a lot, lot with what everyone said in that I think we need a community development role. I think it's really important. I think we need to separate the city and then the finance role. I think with the financial pressures we'll have in the upcoming years and the need to be done with the city administrator, we need to separate those two out. I think that we should post for the role. I'm supportive if, if Zach wants to apply for it. I think that's great and throws hat in the ring. But I think to do this right, it only makes sense to post it. Every major company I've worked for, even if I knew I was gonna get the job, I sort of post for the job and apply for the job. And then there were random occasions where a candidate would come in that was unexpected and they end up hiring that one over me and it was no sight against me. And Zach and I have talked about this one-on-one, so, um, I, I'd like to make sure that, um, we get the best candidate possible. And I hope that Zach is the best candidate, but I'd rather post it. Now, whether or not we post that through a firm or we just post it and then we get a bunch of applications in and between the five of us, we figure out which three or whatever we want to interview, whatever it looks like. I have zero preference one way or the other. I've been interviewed since I was sixteen. So I'm a lot with Scott where I can sit across from somebody and usually tell within ten, fifteen, twenty minutes what that looks like. But I do like the idea of having a company go out, find people and bring us three candidates that they think are the best three candidates position and then we take it from there. So I'm impartial to how we go about doing it, other than I think if Zach wants the position, he can apply for it. And we wish him the best of luck in that, in that endeavor if that's the case.
So you want them separated? Administrator and.
All three of them. Yep.
Okay. I, I have concerns we can keep all three busy. I, I.
I know.
I've seen our budget, but.
I've had conversations with Zach. Oh, yeah, I gotta remember to talk to Marty about ordering that. I gotta talk to him. The finance stuff is being taken care of. Don't get me wrong. But there are things that, that I feel like aren't necessarily being planned out and may, right now haven't bit us in the butt. But at what I'm seeing in the backlog of work, I think if it continues down this path, there will be things that are gonna come up. They're gonna bite us in the butt and we're gonna miss opportunities. And I think at the end of the day, it's gonna cost us more money than it, than it's gonna save us by having them together.
Yes.
I mean.
I don't disagree with going through a process, but we've gotta define what we're asking for. And for me, the, the combined role works. And that's not a forever solution because we're growing, we're changing, and in five years, you know, this, this maybe doesn't work. And we have to look at separating finance and administration duties into separate full-time positions. But I'm not, I'm not sure we've got the quantity of work to support that today. And so that's why I'm, I'm feeling okay with it being a combined role.
So if we do a combined role and Zach doesn't get the job, we're gonna say goodbye to Zach? I know you're sitting right here and I know this.
Yeah, the best way to talk about it.
This is, this is honest. I wanna make sure that we're all understand what we're saying.
That is the question, though, is if we post, how, we can't really post for a combined role.
No, we post the city administrator. Exactly. We need experience, as Scott said, of a city administrator. We need experience. We need to stop being the training grounds that other cities pull people from. When they've been here two or three years, they kinda get their legs underneath them a little bit and then they take them from there. We need someone that can come with experience and help lead administratively the city and drive it forward.
Comes with a dollar sign.
Correct. I understand. But Scott, you want experience too, right?
That's what the city's missing.
Yeah.
Is experience.
And that comes with a dollar sign.
And it's no slam to nobody.
No.
So, so if we look at it as a post, we, we can't post a combined position?
No.
Right now, are we budgeting for a combined position long-term? We combining for two, budgeting for two positions?
In twenty-twenty-three, you are, you are having combined.
Combined in twenty-twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three. Does not mean anything about twenty-twenty-four and beyond. You could do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and no point was it ever said that that's, you know, it's budgeting only. You could technically go, we can go over budget. Sure, all the, I can go over budget.
Yes, that's not what I wanna do. I'm just trying to understand.
It's not the budget. It's what you're gonna spend for.
Yeah, but in real, realistically, if, if all of a sudden in six months, you're in four months, you come up with an administrator and so it costs another, I mean, Zach's gonna go, Zach's gonna go back to his normal, right, his previous salary. Not that you're gonna like that, because it's gonna cut in the, on the middle buying.
In your middle bucket.
At any rate, so all of a sudden, you're only talking sixty, seventy, maybe a hundred grand. In this budget, a hundred grand is not a big deal.
Come up with a good answer for, let's say you post it a full-time and you come up with a good candidate, then you, you maybe look at splitting it.
Yep. Then I, well, maybe, maybe. I don't know. I just know when, when, and I'm gonna say this, there's twofold to this. When Bob Daris came here, I knew right then he was the guy. Just sitting and across the table. I knew he was the guy. Now, it developed, it, it got a little sour afterward, but, I mean, in any rate, at that time, he was the right guy.
Some words, but yes. Yes.
I don't know, so I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Outta here.
So I don't know if we've come to a conclusion. We need to follow on, we need to follow on something.
Putting out an, uh, R F P and then if all of a sudden the right guy shows up, maybe. But I also don't have a problem in the direction we're going now.
Do we go for?
But if we stay this, if we stay this avenue, we need, then we gotta very rapidly look at a community. I mean, that, that person, that position has to have some knowledge.
The C D D director you're talking to?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, the community development director, yes.
Whether it's a community available.
That is budgeted for twenty-twenty-three.
Yep, yeah, let's, yeah.
Help me understand how this would work. So we post for a, a city administrator.
Yep.
Position and see who we get for a city administrator-only position.
Yep.
But then does Zach not apply for that and we, and we say, well, we didn't get anybody we liked and so we're going back to, you know, the split position and, and.
I think Zach, if Zach wants that role, he applies for it.
But that, but we're not posting a dual role.
Correct.
So he would be only the, so we're making the decision to only have.
The finance.
So here's the flip side of that.
That role has a separate role.
If we post that.
Have the choice. I mean, if it comes down, and I don't think you're gonna feel slighted if I, all of a sudden, if you get three candidates and he's one of the three and you pick a different one, he knows he's going back to finance and I don't know that he's gonna feel slight. If we don't get one and he ends up being the administrator, I don't think he's gonna feel slighted either.
I think, I think what David's trying to say is if we do pick Zach, then we still have to hire a finance.
Open finance role.
Well, I think, I think it's working fine right now. It, you tell me, is it working fine?
I mean, there's, I, I definitely do way more city administrator stuff than I do finance stuff on a daily basis. One hundred percent.
But we don't have that much finance.
On multiple occasions, there's too much to do right now for a week, for both jobs.
So on everything that I was doing with finance, I could spend more time projecting stuff, forecasting things, spending more time on finance. One hundred percent. That's, that's the answer. Can I get the finance work done still? Oh, one hundred percent. You're never gonna know the difference. But I could do a lot more forecasting, a lot more diving deep into try to figure out what our best investment pool could be or something if I had more finance time.
But also, when we talk, there are things that's like, well, as administrator, we should be doing these things.
Yep, sure.
Once I'm administrator, I'll do those things. Well, okay, but that, to me, that tells me there's not enough time to do all of it in our conference. That's what I get from our conversation.
There never is.
There never is.
I would love to make time for everything, but I just.
I mean, you can, you can blow the budget out and hire fourteen people. They'll stay busy.
That's not what I'm saying, though. That's a bit of an exaggeration.
It is, but.
What, what, I mean, everyone's busy and I get that. I'm busy in my job, but my job isn't the point where I'm leaving crucial things on the table that I could be doing to help, neither help the city and the citizens move forward or not. And when I, when I have one-on-one conversations with Zach, I'm not gonna get into specifics, but that's, that's what I'm getting from those conversations. And I've been having them three, where we missed one, but two, two, three weeks now we've had those.
Correct. I wouldn't say I'm missing crucial things. I would say that I'm missing things like, I would like to spend more time at Public Works and Police to make contacts, to help people without. I, I don't have time to do that right now. Well, that doesn't mean I don't have time total, but I just haven't made the time to do that yet because it's not been a focus yet.
But to me, that's crucial. Spending time with the gentleman over there on a regular basis, understanding what their department's.
But that's what I also have a director for.
Yeah.
My police chief and my.
Yeah, but if you don't have time to spend time there to work with them to figure out what it is and dive deep, then even if you have the.
Well, I'm okay with us going out for a full-time position and if we don't find what we're looking for, I, I, I also am okay with what's going on right now.
Yeah, I agree. But I think it, it's worth a look.
And, and yeah, I think as we, you know, add houses, add, add, uh, you know, volume to, to what goes on, well, things will reach a point where they need to be split out. But I just, I, everything I've seen says that finance isn't anywhere near a full-time job.
Sure.
Anywhere near. And so.
Maybe we get lucky. We hire Zach full-time and then we find a part-time or dual role that can do the finance plus something else.
Uh, yeah. Um, and I know we have, um, the, the person we just hired, are they, what are they doing?
The person we just hired. The front desk.
The front desk.
Front desk. They're doing front desk stuff. They're also helping with building permits processing, going through those things to help out. Uh, calling builders, saying, hey, your building permits ready? Or hey, your deck permits ready? Or kinda coordinate those things. Also having all the front desk calls are able to be in the office, which is a huge thing because of how we struggled with, you know, just staffing levels here at City Hall, especially if like Amy's doing this and I'm gonna go here and then now we have nobody here and nobody else is on vacation. I mean, this week, we struggled, even the last two days, was somebody's on vacation. So it's like, oh, make sure somebody's there. And having that person in front.
So like you have at least two of us in the office. And sometimes that's hard.
Yeah.
That's a security thing. It makes sense.
And that was part of the, part of the, you know.
Reason why.
It's bringing.
Correct. And it's been one hundred percent fantastic ever since she's joined because.
And there's probably also a little bit of, um, pain with Alec leaving.
You have told.
Oh, yeah, sure, certainly.
All that stuff.
And we didn't hire associate planner position based on the candidates we got. So that's another, you know, another person we can't have in the office.
We didn't. I thought.
We did not.
Did not. So we went out and posted for an associate planner.
Yep.
We had, oops, eight applicants.
Seven, right? Yep.
We went through those applicants. We interviewed the top three.
Yes.
Um, and then we actually even made an offer.
Yep.
They went and worked for a county instead of taking a city offer.
Yep.
Um, we decided not to go with the second pick right now because we posted for the city planner because then Alec left, so it kinda shifted things. And we thought, okay, if we can get someone with experience and then have this person help with interviews, because they're gonna be working most closely with this person. Um, and, um, we were a little bit hesitant about fit and not knowing what fit might even be if we didn't have the city planner in place. So we went out and posted for that. We only, um, had one applicant and we'll be interviewing on Friday for that.
Who has lots of experience.
Has experience.
Lots of experience.
Um, so when you only have one option, um, the options are to either keep reposting, which
Yep.
we can keep reposting, but more time just keeps passing.
Mm-hmm. I just, if it feels good, go with it. That's me.
Friday, we'll sell.
I, I think if there's one and there's no significant negative, you, you have no choice.
Correct. That's, yeah, so Friday will tell the tale.
So.
Well, I, that's, uh, our consensus seems to be to, to post it for a city administrator only. And, you know, I, I would support that as well.
Okay. If we do post it for, here's my other idea. If we do post for a city administrator and we get Zach and somebody else that applies that both have a finance background and we decide to offer the job to either of them, Zach or whomever, we could go to them and say, listen, we want you for city administrator, but we also want you for this. Like, we, we could always go and say, you know, we've looked at this, we've seen this, we think that you're a good fit for both and go forward. I think even if I thought Zach was the best candidate in the world, and I think Zach's very good at what he does, and I hope he applies if he wants it, we need to apply. Have it open there for people to apply. I think that only makes sense to make sure that we as a city are doing.
That's what I'm making sure I know. So if you hire a dual role, I'm leaving. Correct?
That would be, that would be, if we hired somebody else for the dual role.
Okay, just wanna make sure I know.
If we hire a dual role.
That's not Zach.
Oh.
Um.
And, and I don't know.
Are you, are you okay having a city administrator and a finance director like we had before?
Like we have right now?
No, the other dual role. If we separate.
It's a dual role right now.
Yeah, if we separated them out.
So you're saying, you're saying like we did before when Tina was.
Sure.
So separated.
Prior to him being the interim of both, there were two separate roles.
Right, correct.
Are you okay having two separate roles? Assuming we get the city administrator a lot of experience?
I, I also agree that, I don't think that finance is a full-time deal. I just don't. I mean, that's.
But we can deal with that later. Um, but right now.
I take care of my company. I'm the finance guy.
Both of you seem like there's plenty of time to do it. Would you like to apply to be in the finance position?
No, what I'm saying is.
I want less, I want less, not more. And it's not working out that way right now.
No, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is I, I, I just don't, I don't see forty hours a week there.
I don't. Me, me either. I don't.
And, I mean, clearly, you know, I, I don't know. I, I, when we had.
I did, I did do forty hours of work, just to make sure everybody.
Prior, prior to this happening, right?
You also had to bring in what an outside firm had.
Correct.
In shape at the Dayton.
Correct. Yep.
So you were more than full-time, but at this point, I.
Is it, is it normal for the finance director to, like, I feel like looking at and talking to others that Dayton leaves a lot of financial opportunities in the board with, with bonds or grants or whatever. Is that normal for a finance director to, to spend more time digging into or not?
We have S R F do that, but I, you know, I've heard that too. The problem is. Huh? For grant opportunities.
You could theoretically hire a grant person to do that, somebody that knows that background, but.
I'm saying if you're the finance person doing both with the idea of they should be bringing in more money in grants than we're even paying them.
Part of their job.
To offset the entire cost of that as a benefit to the city, that could be a way to separate the two out too, to make it beneficial, because I think we need.
It could be, but S R F is doing that for us right now.
And how much does that cost you?
Uh, I don't, I have no clue.
S R F is not doing that for us.
Huh?
I don't think S R F is doing that.
They're not actively doing that for us.
They're not.
Unless we ask them.
They were working on our project.
Correct. Yeah, project-wise, yes.
Sarah, project.
I brought this up with Tina many times.
Yeah, they're not actively doing anything for grants unless we ask them.
You forget you were, you were getting part, you weren't getting, you were getting part of the story, not the whole story.
They were actively helping us get grants for the interchange, for sure.
They are not working on any.
They are not working on any of their grant applications for us.
Because I think we need someone who's looking at the grants, so they'll say, hey, the city could really use this. This could help with this. We, we're gonna wait on this.
We can now. We just, like, for example, Gary's working on a grant for, you know, uh, we just asked for, what's it called? Safer Grant or something, Gary?
Safer A F G or something like that.
Uh, A F G grant or something. What grant were we working on?
Uh, yeah, so the, a couple of council meetings ago, I had made the request to apply for the A F G grant.
Correct.
So that is, yeah, for full-time finance.
So we have, we have, I mean, we're keeping an eye on grant applications. It just, it wouldn't go to one person. We have most people working on things.
But what I'm saying is to try to mitigate the impact.
But I specifically asked if we have somebody keeping an eye on grant hunting.
If they, if they may see a grant, they'll ask us if we wanna apply for it. It doesn't seem to help, but, um, we are, unless we see an app, a grant that says, oh, yeah, we need their help with that, then we will ask them. However, they are not. I would say if they apply for one.
They're passively doing it more than actively.
They're passively doing it versus actively doing it for us. We also have Black and Beach is the same kinda thing for us for the wellhead treatment.
Yeah, yeah. I know we have those instances, but.
I, I look at the water trails as a good example. We didn't know about some of the grants. We got lucky that Forrest showed up to that meeting and said, oh, there's grants here. And did you talk to these people? Like, there were a lot of grants for that to cover the huge chunk of that cost that we didn't know about. We just got lucky that somebody showed up to, and I'm gonna use my term. Maybe Marty, you knew about it. But it seemed to me, and that means to be luck, that he happened to be there and tell us, we can help. And did you talk to so-and-so and so-and-so, right?
I think, I think with that, part of the, 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 the whole study was to identify grants. And in the final study document, there will be a bunch of grants identified on there. Um, Forrest was at that meeting because he hadn't turned up at many of the other meetings because he was doing other stuff. So he only got involved in the last two minutes, but he's super energized about it. So.
Yeah.
I mean, it was fortunate, but we, we went into the program looking for grant money to make it happen.
And that was part of their selling point.
Right.
They would.
Yeah, you give forty-five thousand and maybe you get a hundred fifty in grants.
Yep.
I agree that I think we're, there's grant opportunities that we're probably not seeing. I did the League of Minnesota's cities training they had recently around that. And I heard names of grants I've never heard of. And so it's certainly not, you know, something the average person is gonna, gonna clue into. I mean, we need somebody that's specifically working for us in that regard or part of their job. But I think that gets us away from what we're trying to decide.
I'm just thinking, other alternatives we can leave on the table is this is an opportunity that we could use then to help mitigate that time if maybe.
So, sorry, city administrator. We want to post a role. We all agree that that's the right way to go forward, at least to post a role.
I think that we at least post a role and see where it goes.
So the question is, we wanna use, I think the default question, we wanna use a firm or do you just wanna post it and have the applications come to us, five, and we manage it?
Well, do we have a good enough job description?
Good question.
What came out of that?
We have the job description that came out of the D D A study. We also have the one that came out of the comp and class study that was done in two thousand twenty, two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen or two thousand twenty. Yep, we have that one as well, so we could review both of those. Um, essentially, which is what D D A said, but I'm gonna tell you right now, whatever you want the city administrator role to do, that's what we put in the application, which is totally different across different communities.
It is. I think you two probably have a good idea of what.
Hmm, sure.
Needs to be in there.
Take a first shot.
Yeah, for sure. Actually, given that, like you say, there's no.
Yeah, there's two of them. There's the one from the D D A study, which I read through and I wasn't loving. Um, but there's the other one from the study that was done in twenty twenty. That was the comp and class study. And they keep a bunch of, bunch of job descriptions out of that. Those ones have been the ones we've typically been using when we've hired somebody. We've adjusted them minutely, but we've been using those as the ballpark.
If we wanna go with a firm, um, we can do that. Uh, like I said, my experience with that isn't very good, but.
It just costs money. So now we have to, now the next step in the process, now we have to do. we have to do an RFP to be able to hire an executive search firm, which is kind of the pain in the butt.
I'm not, I don't, I don't personally want to go on that.
Or we, or you elect to post, which is totally fine too.
And what I've been hearing is, is people aren't filling those positions very quickly, but.
So when you get no applicants, do you want us to repost?
That's gonna be the question.
Okay.
If you get no applicants in, in 30 days, let's talk about it and.
If we get no applicants, that means Zach doesn't want the job.
It's just scaring me just a little bit, because.
We still need to come up with, are, are we saying that we're okay with you guys coming up with?
A job description.
A job description.
Job description?
I think we are.
I would like them to, to basically the first pass and we can review it.
Yeah.
Well, if we knew that though, that holds the ball down two weeks.
You know, I think we, we need to review it and agree that that's the one we want to post, and I think to the, to get some expediency out of this, I, I would be against, at this point, using a search firm, I think we agree on the job description and we post it, and then we talk about where that gets us.
How, how have you done with search firms? I mean.
Not great.
How long would you like it posted for?
Typically it's two weeks, you can go as long as you want.
Two weeks? I, I think that's really short.
Yeah, that's.
People have to, people have to find it.
But didn't you tell me most of like the city stuff is all posted on like one site?
It's all one site.
All the city jobs are posted, so if you're looking for a city job, you know where to go to look for it.
Yep, nine, not every city does it, but I would say 90 to 95% of cities use the League of Minnesota cities, and you go out there and you click on it, it's.
And if you're looking for experience, you're gonna want.
Right now, there's 25 pages of open postings room.
My guess is it's, it's an opportunistic thing too, it's, it's somebody has time and therefore they hail, they'll pop on and look.
Or they're happy and they're looking.
Yeah, two weeks each, what was that?
Or they're not happy and they're looking.
Yeah, really?
So 30 days, though, what do you want to do, or three weeks?
Four weeks. That's more days.
Four, four weeks?
Yeah. I want those two days.
No, it can't. Four weeks and two days. 30 days.
Two days.
That's fine.
Short.
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
I'd do a preference, so I'll go with that.
Yeah, 30 days.
Okay, so you're wanting applications to come in either to myself or Zach and, uh, we'll come up with a process for you guys to review them, do you want them going to one of your emails, how do you want that review process to work?
Can we get them all at the end, early, we wait till the end of the interview? Just get them all in one packet at the end so we can review them?
Sure.
Instead of go to Amy?
I think they should go to Amy.
That makes more sense than me.
Okay.
Yeah, personally.
Unless, unless Amy might apply.
Oh, alright, there you go.
You know.
What's in the trash?
That guy might pass me up.
Correct. Makes more sense.
We'll just send to Marty, we give Marty's email address for everything.
Okay, so we're gonna come up with a job description, we'll share that in an email, being that we get no major feedback or changes, we'll post it for four weeks.
Do we have to wait for a meeting to approve that, or can we do that all via email?
No, you can approve it tonight, so your action can be, we'd like to post for the city administrator, city administrator position pending a job description that you guys are okay with, basically what will happen is, email, I'll work on it, it'll probably go out this week in our weekly update.
Okay.
And then, any, if you have any feedback, I want to add this, I want to add that, this is what it is, great, feed it back to us, if you have any comments, we will resend it back out, say, here's what adjustments were made, I'll highlight those.
So you're not gonna wait for a meeting?
No, we don't need to wait for a meeting, as long as you guys are good with.
I love that, so I'm good with it.
So you'll, you'll look for some response from us?
Yes, yeah, we have negative replies, just let me know that, or let us know that, hey, this looks good, or hey, I want to add this, or I want to add that, or.
I get all emails the day it went out, no.
Got them on your phone?
Y'all, y'all fixed up now?
Yeah, Scott's got it.
So I'll make a motion to post the city administrator position pending approval of the job description by the council.
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion on that, did we miss anything? Did we miss anything?
I don't think so.
Good. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, all opposed, say no?
Okay.
Okay, we're in the.
Perfect. Wonderful.
All right. Item R.
So this is just confirmation of the local board of appeals and equalization meeting being April 11th, um, so this is the annual meeting that we're required to have because we are a local board and we're not the open book, um, we don't really get a say on the date, we kind of get assigned to that, so, uh, this is just one of my ways of making sure, because we need at least one trained member and a quorum, um, this happens to be also a council meeting day, so the council meeting might actually have to start later depending on.
How many people show up?
Yeah, if this meeting is busy or not, or we could choose to reschedule the council meeting on a different day, um, if we're getting lots of contacts prior to this, um, but this is just another way to publish it, post it, try to get the word out there, that's the process when residents have issues with their valuations of their homes or the way they're being taxed, what tax classification they're in, um, so if they have comparables of sales that have happened within this year, um, they can come and ask you guys, you guys have taken in the class, I sent you some information today on that, um, I think you can change it up to 1% um, or in reasonable amount total, and then, um, that would go to the county ultimately and then, um, possibly be an adjustment for a resident.
It would be nice, and I, maybe we already do this, but I haven't caught it, is in the communicator we sent out, if there was a half a page or something dedicated to this to let people know they have to go after the value, they can't do squat about the taxes.
We could do it in the March one, we, the January one was already sent out, so.
And, and, and all they have to do, and you guys have seen this, is come with comparables to convince us, that's it, I mean, the county's not gonna like it, they never like it.
They never do, no?
Yeah.
Is this normally a busy, have you never tried one of these? Is this like not a big deal?
Previously, it's been very busy, the past few years it has not been busy.
Okay.
Now, yeah, I, I, I would expect it to get busier, except.
It's because the market.
Exactly.
The market was low and all the markets on the incline, yeah.
Find comparables because houses were selling for ridiculous.
Yep.
And, and, yeah, and right now, even the county's kind of grabbing values.
The county's always three years behind anyway, so, yeah.
They're just gonna grab a value, they weren't.
They're catching up real fast because they're getting quick from the state, that's why.
Uh, they, yeah, they check values up quick, but, yeah, sometimes, um, their comparables are, are horrid too, so it's, it's hard for residents to come up with comparables, but it'd be nice if, if they all knew what the process was.
Page of facts or something like that when it comes to.
So you need a motion on this, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we go, go with the flow here and if the council meeting ends up being 15, 20 minutes late, so be it.
I'll second.
No.
Sorry.
No, you're good, you're good, any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
And I think you ultimately did that training, I mean, regard, other than Matt, but.
Okay.
And you technically have until February 1st if you'd like to quick do that.
Yeah, which leads me to a point that I forgot to mention, I won't be at the next meeting because I'll be on vacation, gone for two weeks, so, um, I probably, I will try very hard to get it done this week or weekend, but I, I, I don't make any guarantees.
45 minutes online.
Was that all of us?
It's really online.
Oh, is it that quick?
Nothing to it. You can do it tonight before you go to bed, on your phone too, yeah.
Just now.
It's super.
I think they streamlined it, I think you used to be more difficult.
It's super streamlined to know, yeah.
Yeah, simple.
Didn't you have to use to sign in and have trouble logging?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what the.
It was not difficult.
You literally watched the video, acknowledged that you watched the video and.
It was like a test.
Yeah.
There is, yeah.
Pay attention.
I'll find out more.
Okay. Either may ask.
Yeah, Mayor, Governor of the City Council at the last EDA meeting, they had requested to become the Historic Village Action Committee based on the Historic Village Framework Plan. Um, they are requesting and asking, is the council in favor of the Historic Village Framework Plan, if so, would they like to see the EDA to be added to this as the action committee for this, we did touch basis on the work session, which is good, so we kind of have an idea, um, currently the EDA is not listed on the plan, um, they'd be like to, like to be added to the plan, and there's no direction for the, um, direction for the historic village, which there may, there now is, so we should address that and give the EDA something that they would be able to do if we were willing to do that. So we have some stuff in the work session that we just talked about.
Yeah.
Which was basically say that we'd like the EDA to be able to start moving with a small area study, that does not mean that they are the action committee, they would be.
What is the action committee? Is this the committee that's gonna look at?
Correct.
Okay, and, and, so we are gonna get residents on that committee?
If you, if that's what the council would like.
If that's what you so choose, yeah.
Correct.
Well, okay, and that's.
I think that's what was being asked.
The EDA was asking to be that committee.
Yeah, I don't.
Specifically.
Without, they didn't specifically say that we want some other people involved.
No, no, they did not say anything about that, they would like to be the action committee. So that means that they would be the ones driving the plan, if somebody comes in basically and says, I want to re, you know, do this area of the historic village, the action committee would be the one to review it and then provide feedback to the council, say, okay, we have, have they asked to go through planning commission and stuff too, but.
So this is after the overall plan has been planned and, and rough design is done, so.
So if you're, if you're, there's kind of two steps, is are you task, are you tasking the EDA with creating a small area study or running that process to be able to design the historic village to what we'd like, that obviously would have to be approved by council at the end.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then after that, then we would be setting forth a committee to be able to say, okay, this is what we want, and now we have people that are involved in the historic village that would be able to say, okay, this is what the plan looks like.
I think I'm good with the first half of that, which is having them go out and do the small area study, can we table the second half until we get that back and see what that looks like and go from there, or, because I think, I, we need citizens on it, it can't just be the EDA anyways.
If, if EDA gets this, I want some parameters with them.
Yes.
That's the only deal, the EDA needs some parameters.
Is if they, tonight, tonight's meeting was open forum, anyone could have showed up, right?
Yep.
If they were, was there anyone here from the EDA?
Nope, they, they were aware and they were, um, they were emailed a little bit.
If they want to be the action committee, why weren't they here to listen to what I had to say?
Guess as good as mine.
Okay.
Well, it was at 5:15, so.
Yeah, they were aware.
Did they could have called in though, right, it was, was it online, Zoom as well?
No, it was not.
It was live streamed.
It was live streamed.
But we weren't taking public comments, so I didn't have Zoom.
Okay.
Um, the, the other question I've always had about this is, we see other cities, so I know Champlin, their EDA does a lot of stuff, but their EDA is also them.
Yeah.
Which has never made sense to me, I don't understand the mechanism there, well.
It's working out pretty well, looks like.
If anybody has a clue how that works, but.
That was an option.
You can do.
I, I know, I'm just trying to understand why.
Why what?
Why would you have an EDA?
That is the council.
That is the council.
Well, ultimately, that's what we have, because we have an EDA who can discuss things and bring it back to you for you guys to make the decision.
Yeah.
They have, we have an EDA with no power.
With no power, that's what we have now.
They're an advisory committee, they're doing the legwork.
Our advisory board to that.
Yeah, the reason why you'd have an EDA, why I say we have an EDA that is the council, the same bodies.
Yep.
Would be for the taxing authority to be able to bypass, bypass the tax levy limit that was in place in the 90s, that you'd be able to buy sex because an EDA tax levy that was in place in the nineties, that you'd be able to buy sec because an EDA tax levy is technically not part of the levy limit. So the state of Minnesota sets a levy limit if there ever is one.
And that's what I thought it was. There was some.
That's exactly, that's the only reason why.
So other cities that, that do this, how much power do they put into their EDA?
It all varies.
To me, it's a moot point if you have the same council and EDA. Uh, I think Al Kerber has a different set. And I don't remember Rogers or not, how they do that, but.
So are you in favor of having them separate or you prefer them as well? I'm just, I'm just curious.
I'd rather them be separate and I'd rather them, I, I've said for years that I want our commissions to have more authority. Right now, I am not, I just have never been happy with, they, they, and I've had a couple, you know, park members tell me this, that they're, they get to decide what color the, the paint, the swing set becomes. They want more active participation in.
They want the buck to fall out there at their feet as far as the decision.
Well, they want, they want real decision making.
Part of, part of that goes with the history that we've had though. I mean, there was not a whole lot of, there was not a whole lot of decision making by outside people. I mean, it was either this way or it was being driven this way and that's what happened.
Right.
It just had, we'd have to make sure that the council is aware that if you give them power to do that, you have to be accepting of the fact that they might make a decision that is not the same as yours.
Right.
That is true.
Which I think the council should talk about.
Because the, the EDA is not elected, elected, they're appointed.
That's my, that's my rub with it is it's, you know, I mean, I, I'd hate to insult anybody by comparing them to the Met Council, but you know, that there, there's one of those, the complaints about the Met Council, you know, one of the thousands, but the, an important one, that those are all appointed people. There's no accountability to the public. We're accountable to the public. The members of the EDA are not directly so. And so I think that we, we should give our commissions more power. And in particular, in this context, the EDA absolutely seems like the right body to be moving ahead with the small area plan. But I think ultimately the approval of that plan needs to stay here.
I agree. And I, I like the idea of us being the, 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 the gatekeeper, but like the sign ordinance, that thing went on forever. And the council got it, the EDA got it, the planning commission got it. And it ended up being something that I don't think, I, I personally think was, wasn't, anyways, it's.
It was seven pages.
It was just, it, it just churned over here and it churned over here and it, and to me, it, it probably should've went to the EDA. It was almost all business related. Um, and we could've said yea or nay at the end or something, or at least given some guidance, say, hey, you know, we're hearing this, back off.
I, I like the advisory kind of idea where that, you know, they're doing, in this case, there's a legwork for it. They're figuring out, they're picking who they want to use to develop it. They're going for, like, they're doing all of that and then they're coming to us and saying, we did all this work, here's what we want to do.
Here's the plan.
Can we move forward to the next step? And we say, great, here's what we want the next step to be. And they just like go, so they're doing a lot of the stuff. We are just here to make sure that it fits what we see as the council, as the long-term plan, whether that be any of the committees that we have. I think that's the most fitting way to move forward with it. Because again, we are elected and I think that that holds us accountable to it.
I think that's part of the process and we don't have to wait till the end to say, oh, we hate this.
Exactly.
I mean, I, I think there's engagement along the way. This is a big deal and it's a, it's a big project. So why wouldn't we have, you know, joint meetings along the way to make sure that we're all on the same path? So there are no surprises at the end.
Have it be a business item on the agenda. They come in, they tell us what they have going on, we can all talk about it, whatever. It doesn't have to be a special meeting, like, we can do it. We're already here, like, they can come in and talk. It's not, I'd love to hear that.
If they did, if they did that, it most likely would not be them doing the whole plan. They would, you know, go out to have a firm do it. So we would have, we would task that firm to come to the council meeting and give an update, you know, on the quarterly or however many month basis.
But they should be here too, because they're.
Oh, yeah, totally agree. I'm just saying, like, we wouldn't have the EDA present, here's where we're at. We would have the firm say, okay, here's what we've got from the EDA's direction and then.
I, I look at it, I remember project management all the time. I do it for a living and people, companies I work with, the team I work with, they do all the ins and outs, they get everything done, and they do regular steer co-commissions. You may be used to this too, but they do steer co-commissions and, okay, here's where we're at, here's where we're going, does this still seem right? Yep, okay. And they come in regularly, just update, update on what's going on. So I think that just makes sense. And then we have that constant communication and everything's moving in the right direction. We don't get 99% done and find that we're way off track.
Okay.
So I also feel, again, and, because it's in the, the 2030 comprehensive plan, talks more about the historic village. The 2041 just says, keep going. But it, it, it's in there.
Yep.
It talks about establishing an advisory group. And I don't see that advisory group as the EDA. I feel like they're the owner of this, right, the process. I think that advisory group, as it's described in there, is much broader than, than a committee. It's, you know, it's landowners, it's residents. And also, nobody on the EDA lives in the historic village, so you don't get that direct feedback of, well, you can't put that there. It's going to be.
There is a business.
There's one, right?
They don't live there. They do business.
He's got a business there.
Jack.
Jack's got a business.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but my point is, I guess it has to be a broader voice.
The residential portion of it, yeah.
Make sure that it, just as much as, as we want to, well, we need to own it because we're accountable, but we, we need that input so that we get this right. And I, so I, I feel like that needs to be part of it.
Would you like the EDA to be, to help do it that? So I'm trying to figure out the timeline here of what things to happen. So it sounds like we start with the historic framework, the plan that was, been in the 2030 comprehensive, start there. Adjust is what the EDA sees as kind of necessary and say, okay, maybe we do this or that. And adjust it as they see that we can do. And then, and then we have an advisory committee at the end or something, or it's a beginning of the process to get some information done or?
I don't think it's the beginning.
The advisory committee and then the council end up getting the final number. That's what I.
I'm not exactly sure where this comes into play, but I don't think it's at the beginning. And in the same way that we're not giving the EDA a blank sheet of paper to, to start this plan with. The advisory committee group shouldn't, you know, shouldn't be there either. There should be, you know, a framework there that, that they help.
We could have part of that being that we could have the study do an engagement of that.
I think when we think of like the Fernbrook stuff that happened, for example, when we started involving citizens in that, the question was, where is this actually going to be? What's the plat look like? Because they want to understand how it was going to directly affect them. To me, that's the time when we have somebody feel like, okay, we've done this, we've done a lot of work on it, here's where we've landed. Now we want some feedback where someone can say, I live in this plot and this is what they plan on putting in. It's going to be a small little park or whatever. I think that's the time to bring in this advisory. That's what's called the advisory committee. What are your thoughts?
Advisory group.
David, Scott, anyone?
I, I, I guess I'm not necessarily sure when, but I do know that historically advisory groups get stomped on by anybody there of authority. It would be nice if somehow they, their input actually was looked at. I mean, I, yeah.
I, I don't disagree with Matt's concept of, okay, you have the EDA run with the plan, so with the plan, do their, whatever they're going to do is they, here's where we want it to be licensed like. And then you could have the staff liaison for that EDA group, have an engagement of members of that area and hold a meeting down in the historic village, maybe even at Activity Center or something, you know, that area. And have the staff liaison, at the time would be myself, but could be anybody else at that, at that time in time when that would be.
Did you see anything with the Dayton by Design group where they did, I mean, I, I went to those meetings. I, I just don't remember if, and they pulled in Dayton residents for a lot of it, but I don't know if anything was done downtown regarding.
The findings?
Because there was actually a, a thing, I think, that got kicked out after what I seen there that was a little more concise as to what they were looking at for plans downtown, but it wasn't too similar to the 2031, but.
Basically, the biggest jest out of that was, is EDA seeing the advisory committee on that plan. And there is nobody on that plan currently right now today. So they, they're asking to be that advisory committee. I don't have a problem naming, letting them be that with the idea that we're going, we're going to look at whatever they decide.
And, and there's some, yeah, initial guidelines.
Right.
I, I, I don't know how you go forth with that, anything close to that plan with.
Well, yeah, that framework plan has no stormwater looking at, no, no, like in-depth engineering. So that's what we'd hire the firm to be able to do, to be able to help us say, is this plan feasible? How do we actually make it feasible? What do we need to do? So on and so forth. But the EDA could be like, it's more like, okay, do the businesses think they can work there? Can, do you think we could redevelop this area to be able to make it work for those townhouses or be able to make it work for those single-family homes or that crosswalk or whatever? So that's what we, I think, from what I'm gathering, is how you'd like the EDA to do. And then at the end, before we get to, we'd have a check-in with council, make sure we're all good to go for, do a check-in with council, then we can have a check-in with residents of that area.
Okay, yeah.
Since I mean, from the EDA owned a lot, I'm assuming you're wanting the EDA to hang on to that for now?
Well, at least until.
Yes.
So, and Eric mentioned me earlier, there, there's a question about, see, he's, he has a zoning request in for the lot he does own.
Yes.
That's consistent with that plan.
Yes.
I'm, I'm assuming that residents can go forward with stuff as is today. It's not like we're putting the brakes on anything. I don't know that we legally can't. So, okay, and that's why I told him.
Yep.
Can, if, if we deem that there's not infrastructure to support that, can we legally deny it for now?
If you're on a lawyer, she'll answer you, can you?
Um, we cannot, if it meets.
If it meets criteria.
I say, how can we prove, how can we prove development if we feel like everyone else that lives there's, sewer's going to back up because we don't have this.
Yeah, you just wouldn't approve that at all.
Right.
We'd have to have, we'd have to put some, say, yeah, this is, this is a great plan, except for the fact that we can't fulfill that, so. Yet, conditionally approved upon said, whatever we need to, sewer or whatever. I mean, that way we get ourselves a, yeah, you're approved to do that, except for the fact we have to do something in order for you to do that. And so we'd have to be able to say, we're, you're conditionally approved.
Okay.
Unless, I'm unaware of something else.
So if somebody comes to us with a request that's per the current guided use, and you're saying we can just say, no?
They're not conditionally approved.
You, you, we would have to, we'd have to physically then take an action.
That's screwing around.
Yeah, but, but at the same time, we, we can't approve something that.
Well, then we should have it guided that way. Or we should have a moratorium or something. I mean, my understanding was with, with, and I guess.
I, I would look to John because he's been in this area.
We've been told that somebody comes in and they meet the zoning requirements, we cannot deny it.
Correct. Unless there's, like I said, I'm assuming there's got to be.
Well, that's why I would, I would have you defer to the development staging plan. So if there are no public utilities available for that particular development that has a certain land use and zoning designation. In the city of Dayton, most of your agricultural lands don't match the new land use, so you don't have to approve a rezoning.
We're talking about one like in historic village, which is already, technically already been developed, so it's in current.
Yeah.
Right, but if there's no public utilities there, you'd have that ability to.
But there is public utilities.
There is public utilities, but it's not adequate.
Yeah.
Inadequate.
Well, that's one of your, your criteria, that you have adequate public facilities.
Correct, yeah. That's what I would say is that, yeah, you could.
So you can deny on that notion.
So that would be the state.
That there's inadequacy.
Denied at the zoning request.
We can approve this if you pay for all the upgrades.
I mean, it's an ask.
Or you have to wait until, it's approved. You can pay for the upgrades, you have to wait for the city to do it. The city doesn't have a time line to do it, we're working on.
It's going to be a 2040, 2050.
Well, it's a yes, but a no.
Yeah, it's a yes, but.
It sounds like, at least in the short term, we have, we have capacity. It's just a matter of.
Just for some.
Yeah, we have.
For some, yeah.
Yeah, but we should also decide at what percentage, 100%, I know is actual max capacity, but I'm not okay approving up to 100%.
Right, exactly.
Ninety-five, ninety.
Yeah, we, we as a council should, and it doesn't have to be today, but we should add it to maybe an agenda, like, what is the approval that we're willing to approve? And we should get that in place before a bunch of things come in, so we know, like, we're not going to go past 85% capacity.
Well, we would have to do that as part of this plan.
Correct.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
It does. I think that would be something we'd want to do.
Yep. But I think that's a requirement that we need to agree on.
I agree on both points, yes.
Yep. Is what is maximum capacity.
So I'm okay with the EDA getting this as long as they don't.
They don't get final stamp.
Rearrange the, the whole plan, the whole.
Plan. It wouldn't behoove them, because they do all this work, bring it to us, we'd say, nope, go back and try again.
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, so I have the plot process to be to start with the framework plan, EDA would be able to start moving forward with that, and how you refer to be able to help them with trying to figure out exactly what you need to do. I don't know what that's going to cost with the RFP thing. Then we touch base with council before and make sure we're on the right page or EDA's on the right page. And then we'd have an advisory committee that we could set up at the Activity Center to be able to touch base, okay, now we've gotten this far, council's okay with it. How do you feel about this thing? And then we get feedback from them. And then that goes to council for a final approval. That's kind of the steps that I have written down. Am I way off the mark? Am I close?
That's pretty good.
I would like them to just know that, in my opinion, they should hesitate on communicating more with us than communicating less. Than do my feedback. I think what you said is fine, but I think if they decide they want to come in and touch base more often, I have no problem with that. I'd encourage it.
Sure.
Yeah, and it doesn't necessarily come into play for this, but we got to throw out this 500-foot notification thing.
That's a minimum by state statute.
No, no, a minimum.
Yep, don't just scream.
And that's my, that's what I'm saying.
Historically, we've, we've talked about this a couple times, and I thought we had changed now. And maybe, Amy, you know this, but when, when something does happen like that, what do we look for to, for the requirements? Because I thought at least a couple years ago, we changed that to 1,000. And I don't remember what it was in the context of. And unless, so let's say we did. How would you guys know?
I know we've always gone above minimum.
But do you guys have like a checklist for, let's say you're doing.
Alec did.
Planning, that's out of my realm. I'm not a planner.
Sure.
Um, but that would be something a planner would know.
Yeah, well, we would just look at this, this recent
Yeah.
situation where people are more than 500 feet away. But here they are, you know, en masse to, to express their displeasure with it. And they weren't, you know, they weren't legally required to be notified. Well, legally required is, you know, is the minimum. And, and I think that we may have heard, may have heard from these folks a lot sooner had, had we swung that net a bunch wider.
But, but on, on self-defense, it was in the packet. Anybody has the right to get the packet.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I just think that it costs us next to nothing to.
Right, no, I agree. The only thing that was basically wrong is it wasn't listed on, on the plan that connects us on this property for a possible future substation.
Yeah. So I spun us off track here, but, because that's, that probably doesn't come into play until 15 years from now on this thing, but.
I got it.
But the rest of the stuff you said was fine with me.
Okay, sounds good.
So we're going to vote on what Zach said?
Somebody else.
Yeah, so basically, it starts with the frame, um, we'll have the EDA start with the framework plan, be able to go off RFP, to be able to find a company to do it, to be able to start updating that plan, to be able to get a good plan going forward. I don't know if it'll be similar to the framework plan in, in total, but it'll look at all the aspects, look at all the limitations we have, so on and so forth. And then come back, touch base with the council, maybe more than once, maybe twice. I don't know how long, how many times it will be. Once we get a good base for, okay, that council's good with that, with that plan, then we'll have the meeting at the Activity Center or somewhere down in the historic village to make it easy for people to get to, they can walk to, whatever, um, to be able to address things, get feedback on those things, say, how is it going? They could tell us, okay, I live at this corner, this is now going to be this, that doesn't work, or whatever else, and then come back to council for final approval.
Yeah, that's fine. Good with that.
Okay, motion.
Thank you. I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. All is opposed, say no. Motion carries. Five zip. Official appointments.
I have a typo. It is O2-2023. Okay, so I'd like to just go down this resolution and if you guys could tell me who's filling in where. Does that sound like a plan?
That sounds like a plan.
Okay, so acting mayor, who would like to take that role?
I think Dennis is this person that represents the city, but represents Dennis in his absence. I think Dennis should appoint this person.
Well. I guess who wants it? I mean, it's, it's rare that it's needed, but it will be needed.
It's rare that it's needed.
If I get it by bus, it comes in handy. So.
We're out of town, it also comes in handy. It's like most extreme here.
It didn't happen that there did happen.
It did just.
School bus?
No, what I'm getting at is, is that the only power that ever, that ever, is, ever had to use that? Is, yeah, is, is for replacement.
Yeah, it's really just someone who's willing to step up and run the meetings. And then there are a couple of meetings, um, like the Northwest Mayor meetings. If you're not able to attend them, that would be your backup to be able to attend those. Um, because there are some additional meetings that the mayor, um, gets invited.
Okay.
Dave, you want it?
Sure.
Because I have no desire to go to.
Well, Travis is a senior member here, so I, you know, I'll step on your toes.
You go right ahead.
All right, I got David for now.
So it's on with Dave.
Um, Planning Commission. So we do recommend that you guys alternate commissions that you've been liaison for. It's a recommendation, not requirement. So I need a liaison for the Planning Commission and then an alternate. Who is previous?
I.
Dennis is on it now.
I was.
Dennis, are you fine giving that up? Are you really enjoying the planning?
I, I don't mind doing it. It's, it's a longer meeting, so it's up to you guys.
First Tuesday of the month.
I mean, I'll back him up if you want, because.
Okay, so I have Dennis, and then Scott, you're going to be his alternate.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Park Commission, we need to fill a liaison and an alternate.
I'll take the Parks Commission. No one has an objection. That's what the first Tuesday, I think you said.
The Park Commission is the first Tuesday in the month at 6:30. So Matt, I need an alternate.
I'll be the alternate, whoever else wants it.
Travis. Elm Creek.
Marty don't want you.
We pass.
Elm Creek Watershed, we.
I think that was me, wasn't it?
So.
Doug Baines.
Doug Baines.
Doug Baines, and then I was the alternate.
So is he, are we reappointing him or what?
I think he's just on the watershed and he's a Dayton resident. We also have engineering that may attend these meetings if we have a concern.
Okay.
We attend all of the TAC meetings and then commission meetings if there's an agenda item that needs assistance, but Doug is the chair of the commission.
I, I know we, we have reappointing him. I just don't know when that happens, so.
Yeah, it's usually been on this resolution. I don't know that we ever really give him an option, but.
Well, yeah, we don't get volunteers, but, yeah.
Travis, you want to be alternate?
I think I was alternate. It doesn't matter. I can still stay alternate if nobody wants it.
And then we have the League of Minnesota Cities.
That's me. Congrats. For now.
You or someone else.
Senior administrator.
Yep.
We might have to come back.
Uh, Northwest Hennepin League.
Who's my, who's the backup there?
You.
Uh, for the League of Minnesota Cities? I have no backup. Fantastic.
So be there.
Amy's the assistant.
Amy, yeah, you and Amy.
I'm not sure that's what it is.
Congratulations.
Uh, the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities. I wasn't sure when this one met.
It's the second Wednesday.
Yeah.
It's, it's a dinner meeting. They typically have a speaker. Travis and I have been on it. I tend to go every other, or count wise, I probably go to every other one.
I'm going to give this one up. I would like to see Matt on that, if you'd like it.
I have absolutely zero desire. I'd have as much enjoyment.
It's Wednesdays, Loretto, pig on the porch, or the choo-choo is what it was before.
For me, it's the timing of it, not anything else.
So we have two seats. So, um, I, like I said, it's, it's tomorrow. I'll, I'll be going tomorrow. But the other person can go. So if somebody else wants to do that.
Was it Wednesday? What?
The second.
It's really just a, a free dinner and a speaker. And, and there's.
Did you say free dinner?
It's cheap, Scott. It's free dinner.
I have, I don't need.
Mayor's from various, um, west side, northwest side, so Long Lake, Rogers.
Loretto, or I mean, yeah, Loretto, Corcoran.
That whole, Long Lake.
David would go to Corcoran?
And it's, it's not something you have to go to.
Sure, I'll be the alternate.
Yeah, it's not a.
I'm supposed to drive the groomer on Wednesday nights, but that's not till later.
That's only the one, right?
I hope so.
That sounds like way more fun.
Is there an alternate for that scene?
I want to sign up for that.
Exactly.
Okay, so, yeah, you don't, and, and like I said, I, I, I probably hit half of them. I'll bet not even half. So it's, again, it's just an information thing.
It's not that important, is it?
You can talk to, actually, it's pretty good for communicate, for finding what other cities are doing. Problems they're having.
Trials, tribulations.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, and then we have the I-94 Quarter Hour Commission that meets the third Thursday at 1:00, and I have whoever the administrator is, and then Marty as a backup.
Assigned, checked.
Congratulations.
All right.
A one-hour meeting you didn't know you were going to be part of.
He's been the backup for four years.
I-94 Chamber. Did we find out when they met?
Nope.
We didn't get a response.
Nope. The board meetings, I never got a response.
Okay, so you can sign up for something that we don't know when they meet.
And Dennis is currently that.
Congratulations.
I am?
I think you are. I think you were. I'm pretty sure it was you.
I can tell you, maybe. Nope, I didn't grab that.
It was Dennis that was.
It was totally Dennis.
I think.
It's still Dennis.
For two more years.
Was.
So, I mean, the I-94 has the State of the Cities, which we typically ask you to go.
Yep, yep.
So I'll put you down. Do we have an alternate? Is that just going to be David as the?
That's fine.
Okay.
And that's the I-94 Chamber.
Yes.
They have, all it is is various events. They have board meetings, but.
Yep. Yeah, I get all the emails. It's just that it's usually.
I didn't get any information asked.
Well, they do that first responder recognition.
Yeah, that's usually.
Summer, spring. It was nice. I know I went to it last time.
Yeah. Um, okay, and then we have the EDA.
That's me.
And it was Julie.
Will it continue to be you?
Uh, it's going to continue to be me. That's fine. I don't have any issue with it. Unless one of you guys will, I'll stay there. Uh, it's gonna continue to be me. That's fine. I don't have an issue with it. Unless one of you guys will, I'll stay there. Uh, and they are going to ask for just one council person. It's whether or not you guys want to.
Well, I think.
I think one's.
They have, you have to have two for now.
You do.
They do.
By law, I think.
By, yeah, by the bylaws, they have to have two for now. If they request to have an adjustment to the bylaws, they can do that, but then it has to be approved by the council.
Okay.
And then we would remove one person.
I will let Hudner know that, because he's, he's looking at just one.
Statute also directed some of that. The statute's very specific about, you could have like three, four, five, seven, and.
Correct. It depends on what kind of, how it's presented on the financial statements is what it comes down to. So because we have two members on the, on the EDA, it's a discreetly presented component unit versus a blended component unit, because we don't have voting majority. If we had a voting majority, which we had preve, or never had, then it would be a blended component unit. So it's not gonna change how it shows on the financial statement. It's just a different page of how that works. Very, very simple.
Okay, so we need two people as of now, unless they request bylaws changes.
Correct.
So I have Scott.
Wrong time of day for me.
Seven thirty a.m.
Seven thirty a.m.
Yeah, third Tuesday though.
Every, third Tuesday.
David, I'd love to do that.
Hi, David.
I'm just backup.
You're available.
Just backup. We have two for sure.
There's two.
Yeah, there's two, so.
I only miss if I space it out and don't get up.
And then Dennis, you're back for the alternate for either one of those two?
Eh, not too, not too much on.
No, are you not EDA?
I'm, I'm not. I didn't think I was, at some point.
You were previously.
You were previously. You and I flipped.
Yep.
Yeah.
You and I flipped.
Yeah.
I'm gonna assume Matt and Travis are a hard no.
For what, the backup?
Yep.
Seven thirty a.m. I can back up, but I need notice.
So you're saying there's two plus a backup?
So I can make sure I get away from work to know that.
I have no problem making it.
So if Scott can't make it, or if David can't make it, we would have the alternate fill in.
I, I, I can be the alternate, but I need notice.
You're not gonna get no, if I miss.
I'm letting you know I'm not going to any of the meetings.
Here's my notice. Make sure. I, I can be backup on it. Most time I can move things around.
Okay.
And if I can't, Travis can be the backup back.
Backup, the backup plan.
We'll send Zach. I'm already there.
All right, so the Fire Relief Association, we need a council member.
I can take that one.
Okay.
Unless someone else wanted it.
I can.
I was.
You'd be good on that.
Would you like to be the alternate?
Alternate?
Yeah, that's fine.
It's okay with you, Gary?
That has nothing to do with Gary.
I know. I just wanna make sure he's okay with it. That's all.
Um, and it's a quarterly meeting if we meet, and it's usually on a Thursday night. Um, Assistant Ween Inspector is Hunter. And then we had to add the Metro Cities.
So we have been members of Metro Cities, however, we have never had a member actually go to a Metro Cities meeting.
Which is the third Thursday at six p.m.
Correct.
I'm out.
So that.
So what, are we supposed to have somebody go to it?
We don't have to have somebody go. It's just to be able to give, basically, they give legislative updates, what the Metro Cities does. Provides what, what's going on at the legislation, what's going on with different things.
Bring info back.
Correct. That's all it is, is going there, getting, bringing info back. Um, you don't have to go.
And they email it out afterwards.
They email it out afterwards anyway, so.
Oh, you can put me on there. I'll never show up.
I would love to do that. That sounds fantastic. I'm not backing that one up. He won't go. He's the only unit I know.
Scott with no backup, got it. Um, and then we have the North Metro Mayors, and I'm really just putting this on there because we're a part of it, so it's just assumed that it's gonna be Dennis and David.
Yep.
Okay, we're all good with that? That's all I needed for that, so when you are ready to motion and second.
Right, I need a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, hold it.
Before I finish and make the motion, uh, as long as we're on the topic of appointments, is the council comfortable with the Planning Commission appointing their officers? Or do you want to make those appointments?
Uh, you mean the chair?
The chair, vice chair, and secretary.
Yeah, they, I think they typically do.
I think they do it, don't they?
I don't know. It's been a while.
Historically, that you have allowed them to make that decision.
Let them do it.
What's that?
Historically, the council has allowed them to make that decision.
They have, but I, I know when I was in Parks, the council said it, and it was Doug. But I don't know Parks, you guys.
They encourage them to change, so you don't have a chair for six years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
How's that worked out?
I don't know if it was for all the commissions, but I think so. The way our ordinance is written now is that the council.
Correct.
Appoints the chair.
Correct.
To those committees. Now, maybe that's not necessary, but that's what it says.
So speaking of commission, we've had the Planning Commission position open for a while. I guess that should have been my update tonight.
Oh, yeah.
It will go out in the communicator that will be hitting nailboxes soon. Um, hoping we get some interest.
Nobody signed up yet? Nobody signed up yet?
No.
Well, I know one person wanted to. They, but they must not have known. Okay, it's advertised.
It's on our website, it's under announcements. Been there a long time.
Do the chairs for these committees have extra authority or power?
No.
Nope.
It's just a.
You could just swing the guy.
Run the meeting in one vote.
Run the meeting, run the agenda.
Well. It's tempered a little bit. They will drive over you if you, if, if given the opportunity sometimes, so depending on what's going on and.
I'm just trying to understand if it's worthwhile for us to be the ones that decide that.
They are the ones running the meetings, essentially. They're, just like the mayor. The mayor has more power than the council does.
Yeah.
However, they are running the meetings, so.
I think it was, um, giving the council the ability to make sure that there has a change and that we're, um, not stagnant.
Just reappointing.
I don't have any problem letting them all pick their own.
Yeah.
Generally, they know their members well enough, they'll sort through that.
Yeah, I get, yeah.
Yeah, so.
What are your thoughts, Dennis?
I'm, I'm fine with them picking it.
Okay.
The unanimous.
We have, we're good, okay?
Same.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Okay, so Resolution Two.
Two twenty twenty-three, so Dave made a motion. I need a second. Scott, any more discussion on that?
Nope.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion carries. Um, you set a meeting date for staff and council.
Correct, yep. So what this is related to is the council retreat. It was ordered in December, and a weekly update that I sent out that we'd like to have one as city staff.
A retreat on Red Lake?
I would love to have a retreat on Red Lake. It's not gonna happen. This, this, um, retreat is to be able to give some more information to the council, give some more information to staff, try to make sure that we're interacting, you know, the way we should be, and make it sure we're all on the same page with how things should happen. So we can just gain some trust back and forth between staff and city council, but also a big help for Matt, to be able to learn what certain people do, what certain people have and responsibilities for, where to go for questions, and also just a good refresher for everybody to have. I've done this in a previous city, um, and not as the city administrator, but as the finance director, and it was a good just refresher to give kind of a, okay, here's where you go for this thing, here's where we go for that thing, here's what we're doing on a regular basis, just to give everybody a refresher course.
Is this like a four-hour, eight-hour, seven-day?
Yeah, four-hour.
Probably a three-day.
Three-day?
Yeah.
Seven hours.
Vegas it is.
Yeah. It'd probably be three, four hours. It might, it might be less than that. It might be more than that, depending on questions and comments, you know, back and forth. I don't know if we wanna do, it sounds like a weeknight worked better for people when I asked a question instead of a weekend. I don't want to give out my weekends either.
Weekends are bad.
Staff did, but us directors feel like it's a really good positive thing for us to be able to do that with the council. So sometime in February, because Matt is gone for the entire month of January.
No.
Oh, I'm.
Two weeks, fourteen days.
Two weeks.
Exactly fourteen days. That's a lie, because I'm using part of that time to come and spend with the directors, heads of departments.
So, yeah, so sometime in February. It does not matter to us what day, what time, I mean, probably starting after.
Mondays or Wednesdays. Does that work for anybody?
I'm fairly open for the most part.
It's okay for me.
Prefer Wednesdays over Mondays.
Mondays or Wednesdays? What, Wednesdays, what did you?
Yeah, Mondays and Wednesdays. My, my wife tends to teach on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the evening.
I prefer Wednesdays over Mondays if we have to pick a day.
Yeah.
I cannot Wednesday, first and third of the month.
Okay, so we have down to the eighth and the twenty-second. If we do Wednesdays, it's Wednesday's work for you, Scott?
And Monday's work too.
So it could be the sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, or the eighth and twenty-second. Any directors have any issues on any one of those dates? Should I ask you guys first then?
Give you time to plan. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I am tied up the eighth. I'm not available.
Twenty-second, Wednesday.
Is Ash Wednesday? I would love to spend that with him.
Gives you plenty of time to plan too.
We have twenty-second. It'll be five to nine. We'll provide dinner, again, just like we did tonight. Um, it'll be probably just a roundtable session. We'll probably have some PowerPoints and just information to be given. All of that information will try to, directors, directors will work with our, work with our department head team and try to get some information out before the meetings. You have time to review those questions, so you have questions to put down and get to those things, but if you have anything you guys would like to add, you guys most certainly are just as quilling as staff is to provide information, and, and it's also a back and forth to figure out what you guys are looking for from us. As to us, okay, we want more information on this, we want more information on that, we'd like to have this updated, we'd like to have that updated, you know, whatever it is. It is a back and forth. It's not just a one-way street, so.
So you have an agenda?
Yes.
Of some kind.
I'll put an agenda together, just like I did, um, just like we did tonight for the work session. Um, once we get with the department directors and.
Five o'clock?
Yes, five o'clock, five to nine. We'll plan a five to nine. It might go five to seven, it might go five to eight.
Yeah.
Somebody send out an appointment for this, or?
Yep.
I will send out.
We not, not do that anymore.
Amy would love to do that.
That'd be great.
Um. Do we want this live stream? This is more of a work session. I don't feel like it needs to be, but we need to know to let Chris know.
No, I don't think it's.
It's not required. We just have to record it, which we would anyway.
Yeah.
It has to be open for everyone to show up, right?
It's absolutely open.
Yeah, so I would say.
It will be posted and.
Has to be recorded, has to be posted.
Uh, so speaking of that, um, what's it cost us to, 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 uh?
Record?
Record. Not audio, the video, like Chris does.
For a meeting?
Yeah, say.
They have Chrissy or adopted Chris?
Well, we just updated his contract a couple of meetings ago.
Well, here's where I'm wrong with this. It, it seems at this point that the ADA's got enough stuff where it might be nice to get them.
I don't know if we have the availability, but we can look into that.
But Chris may not be available. That would be the only thing. We could trade somebody else in. I'm not saying we couldn't do that. The cost for Chris was, I can't remember what it was, probably a couple hundred dollars, few hundred bucks.
Per me.
Okay, hold on. Chris, go ahead. Seventy-five an hour.
So it depends on how long the meeting.
So, yeah, two, three hours, that's a hundred fifty bucks or two hundred twenty-five dollars, once a month.
Can I ask one follow-up question on that? I think I'm on board with that, too. That makes sense. The meetings, the way that they're stored now as video, they're not on YouTube, so they're on like this third-party system.
Yep.
It's not accessible by all computers, um, and it's not downloadable. So like, if you wanted to download it, listen to the meeting and go on a run, or take it as a podcast, or whatever, you can't do that, which I think deters people's ability to stay involved in what's going on with the city. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels. This will bring it up in a month, but since we're on the subject, I would like to see us use a format that is much more widely acceptable, downloadable, and usable, or.
Uh, when we implemented this, we did look into options. Um, so I think there was some concerns. I know we do have a, remind me what you said.
YouTube.
Thank you. We do have a YouTube channel.
Other cities use YouTube channels.
Yep, you have yours. I, I think one of the concerns out there, there wasn't a way for us to limit the advertisements on a YouTube channel for specifically the council meetings.
Paid-for-premium, there's no advertising.
As I say.
That, that, that was for live stream. That was for live.
The live streaming though, right?
Okay, all right.
We were live streaming and.
I just know it was looked into as part of the live stream.
Correct. I, I'm less worried about the, the live streaming works fine. I'm worried about the video. If you can't make it, you wanna play it back.
Yeah, you come on up.
Yeah, give us a little.
We love your input, sir.
Damon Adams.
Did you, did you get any assignments? Fill us in.
Did we assign you to any committees?
When it comes to our site of going in to do video on demand, it should be accessible to all computers and all browsers. So if there's a problem with that, let us know. We can take that to our person who's in charge of, uh.
Managing.
You and I can connect.
Posting that site. YouTube, you, if, from my experience of what I have with my YouTube page, if you're a city entity, you can sign up to YouTube page. You do not have to have monetization, which means you will not have any.
You don't generate ad come off.
Right, you're not generating any ad revenue, so you do not have to monetize your page. So we can easily upload, because I could take our meetings, our files, upload of, because I usually upload to Dropbox for our minute makers, our minute takers. I could take that file, easily upload it to a YouTube page as well. Can easily be set up and done, and I can take care of that as well. As I take care of all the post-production with these meetings, when I get back to the office, I do all the editing, putting on, you know, the, the chapter markers of each.
Yeah.
Agenda item and stuff, and upload it to our site, but it can also easily be uploaded to a YouTube site as well, too.